We'll call this meeting to order. Roll call please.
Councilmember Rivas?
Present.
Green?
Present.
Councilmember Beltran?
Present.
Vice Mayor McCurvy?
Present.
Mayor Masto?
Present. Moving on to oral communication. This is the opportunity to address the City Council on any matters scheduled for closed session unless additional time is authorized by council. All commentaries shall be limited to three minutes. Please come forward at this time if you have comments. Not seeing anyone. City Manager, closed session.
Thank you Mayor, members of the council. We have seven closed session items tonight. The first one is Government Code Section 549-56.8 Conference with real property negotiators property APN 243-330-002 Agency Negotiator Richard Tree negotiating party City of Porterville and Michael L. McElhaney and M. Cherry TRS under negotiation terms and price. Item number two Government Code Section 549-56.8 Conference with real property negotiators property APN 245-010-091 Agency Negotiator Richard Tree negotiating party City of Porterville and Ben Ennis under negotiation terms and price. Item number three Government Code Section 549-56.8 Conference with real property negotiators property APN 245-010-049 Agency Negotiator Richard Tree negotiating party City of Porterville and Pan Koons under negotiation terms and price. Item number four Government Code Section 549-56.95 liability claim claimant Lacy Cabrera agency claimed against City of Porterville. Item number five Government Code Section 549-56.9D1 Council with legal counsel conference with legal counsel existing litigation Dominguez versus City of Porterville at all Tulare County Superior Court case number VCU 328001. Item number six Government Code Section 549-56.9D2 Conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation significant exposure to litigation one case in which facts are not yet known to potential plaintiff. And last item number seven Government Code Section 549-56.9D4 Conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation initiation of litigation two cases.
Okay, thank you City Manager. And with that we will go into closed session and reconvene at 6:30.
Okay, we'll reconvene open session and report on any reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you Mayor, on item number four, the claim by Leslie Cabrera on a motion by Vice Mayor McCurvy and seconded by Mayor Meister and a four zero vote with Councilmember Reavis out of, temporarily out of the room, that claim was denied, thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Okay, I'll ask you all to stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Green. But before we have the pledge of allegiance, I'd like to dedicate a moment of silence for Officer Corona. It was a, he is a parlor police officer but from the area and had a tragic car accident. And then I also would like to take the time to recognize Sarah Beckstrom and Andrew Wolfe, who were National Guardsmen that were killed or murdered. One of them was murdered, one still on life support in DC. And so I'd just like to take a moment of silence for those folks.
Please, someone. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if anybody would like to give an invocation, please come forward at this time.
Father God, have come before you in the mighty name of Jesus. I thank you, Lord, for our mayor, I thank you for the city council, I thank you for the job that they're doing. I ask you to be with each and every one of them. God be with our police department, be with our sheriffs, our highway patrol. God cover them in the blood of Jesus, let nothing but fall on them. God, we thank you for the people that come and are here to lift up and to do what is best for the city of Porterville. We thank you, God, for the ones that are doing their job. And God, we give you praise for it, we want to thank you and we give you, we thank you for what you're doing in Jesus' name, amen.
If there's anyone else, not see anyone, please be seated. Okay, so we changed the process in the way we're doing meetings and we are now adding council comments in the beginning of the meeting. So that way we have an opportunity to address the people with what we're doing as the electeds representing the constituents of Porterville. Councilman Beltran, do you have any comments?
Okay.
Councilman Green?
Well, I have a little recognition, I want to recognize Mr. Donnie Moore for taking care of a project for me over on, on the ditch on Oak Street, east of Plano. I really appreciate him taking care of that, the boy, the guys did a great job. And Donnie, if you'd like to stand up and take a bow or come out and do the holy golly or something, you know.
I'll definitely let our staff know that performed the work, thank you so much.
Guys did a good job, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Green. Councilman Reavis, do you have any comments?
No comment.
Okay, Councilman, or Vice Mayor McCurvy, I apologize.
Thank you Mayor. Yeah, I'd just like to make a few comments, you know, we just came out of Thanksgiving and it's a great time of the year, I just want to always emphasize it's always great to reset on Thanksgiving and be with our family and, and really think about those things in, that are important in our lives and our community. And it's a great time of the year to be thankful and count our blessings. I had the pleasure of going to the award ceremony for the Porterville Chamber of Commerce and it was just an excellent, excellent event, the best one I've ever been to. I really wanted to just make a couple of comments about that because it was just amazing to see so many folks coming together for entrepreneurship and small business and the new leadership transfer of the chamber was excellent. Larry Ann did an excellent job of presenting, we saw a lot of folks that we knew and we made a few new friends and new networks, new networking. But raising up those students, Fatima and Wilbur, and it was nice, the event was decorated really well, very well done by Christie and the team. And it's just nice to go in there and just relax with members of the community and talk about those things that are important. And the Harmony Magnet Strings Orchestra was there, it had a really nice ambiance and we were able to have a nice evening and recognize people that do great work in our community. And among those, we had, the Small Business Award was Oasis with Ryan and his family and his team there and it was just really heartfelt. And we also had the Woman of the Year, Rhonda Harvey, which is the Helping One Woman How and Hope, Helping One Person Everywhere, The Antlers of Hope, just a great story of community, a great story of family and really pointing towards our Lord and Savior and talking about what's so important in our lives to remember to be centered on. And it was, it came together with Dennis Townsend getting the Man of the Year and it was always an inspiration when you have a man like Dennis that really is a pillar of the community and a leader in the church and a leader in the county. And just to watch Taha, and we're at odds a lot, Taha and I, we have a lot of difference of opinion, but to watch him tell that heartfelt story about Dennis, it really brought back a lot of memories from when I met his dad. And it was just a really nice night and it was well done. The Porterville Chamber of Commerce has really did an outstanding job with that, recognizing the entrepreneurship and our local leadership. And I just wanted to call that out because it's just an awesome thing. And we have some new leaders with Scott, who's wearing this great white suit, he stood out, because it was all black and he's in this white suit, and they're like, oh Scott, great job Scott, it's nice to see you here tonight. And I see Breyer out there, great job Breyer, well done. It was just an amazing evening, it was a lot of uplifting conversations and, and a lot of spirit in that, of the community. And I know that the chamber and the Rotary and Oasis are all going to be sponsors of the Christmas parade and that's coming up here at the, on Thursday, so I hope to see you guys out there. It's just a really great time of the year to count our blessings and focus on the things that are important and, and really just, you know, center ourselves on the community and, and the positive spirit that we have. And I just wanted to say a few nice things about that. And I also really want to say something really nice about Fred Beltran. I know the Porterville Rescue Mission, it does yeoman's work, I think it was the 12th year that Fred was out there with Susan Uptane and, and all the others that are not named in the newspaper article, but they're really saving, they're helping people and they're saving souls, they're getting people off the street and they're helping them, we have I think at least six of them that are going to college. And Susan told me this great story about when we were going through the bus, back and forth, the bus situation, that they had just taken the position to buy those guys some bikes so that they could get to and from class and they didn't have to worry about the transportation and they were very independent. But it's great to see that there, there's people that are getting off the street in our community, we're providing the services and it's a
What's that jerky for, Greg?
Our employees.
Okay, we'll reconvene, open session, and report on any reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you, Mayor, on item number four, the claim by Leslie Cabrera on a motion by Vice Mayor McCurvy and seconded by Mayor Meister, and a 4-0 vote with Councilmember Rivas temporarily out of the room. That claim was denied. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, I'll ask you all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Councilmember Green. But before we have the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to dedicate a moment of silence for Officer Corona. It was a, he is a parlor police officer, but from the area and had a tragic car accident. And then I also would like to take the time to recognize Sarah Beckstrom and Andrew Wolfe, who were National Guardsmen that were killed or murdered. One of them was murdered, one still on life support in DC. And so I'd just like to take a moment of silence for those folks. Councilman Green?
Please, someone. What?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every freedom and justice for all.
Okay, if anybody would like to give an invocation, please come forward at this time.
Father God, have come before you in the mighty name of Jesus. I thank you, Lord, for our mayor. I thank you for the city council. I thank you for the job that they're doing. I ask you to be with each and every one of them. God be with our police department, be with our sheriffs, our highway patrol. God cover them in the blood of Jesus. Let nothing but fall on them. God, we thank you for the people that come and are here to lift up and to do what is best for the city of Porterville. We thank you, God, for the ones that are doing their job. And God, we give you praise for it. We want to thank you. And we give you, we thank you for what you're doing. In Jesus' name, amen.
If there's anyone else, not see anyone, please be seated. Okay, so we changed the process in the way we're doing meetings, and we are now adding council comments in the beginning of the meeting. So that way, we have an opportunity to address the people with what we're doing as the electeds representing the constituents of Porterville. Councilman Beltran, do you have any comments? Okay, Councilman Green?
Well, I have a little recognition. I want to recognize Mr. Donnie Moore for taking care of a project for me over on, on the ditch on Oak Street, east of Plano. I really appreciate him taking care of that. The boy, the guys did a great job. And Donnie, if you'd like to stand up and take a bow, or come out and do the holy golly or something, you know?
I'll definitely let our staff know that performed the work. Thank you so much.
Guys did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Green. Councilman Rivas, do you have any comments?
No comment.
Okay, Councilman, or Vice Mayor McCurvy, I apologize.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd just like to make a few comments. You know, we just came out of Thanksgiving, and it's a great time of the year. I just want to always emphasize it's always great to reset on Thanksgiving and be with our family and, and really think about those things that are important in our lives and our community. And it's a great time of the year to be thankful and count our blessings. I had the pleasure of going to the award ceremony for the Porterville Chamber of Commerce, and it was just an excellent, excellent event, the best one I've ever been to. I really wanted to just make a couple of comments about that because it was just amazing to see so many folks coming together for entrepreneurship and small business. And the new leadership transfer of the chamber was excellent. Larry Ann did an excellent job of presenting. We saw a lot of folks that we knew, and we made a few new friends and new networks, new networking. But raising up those students, Fatima and Wilbur, and it was nice. The event was decorated really well, very well done by Christie and the team. And it's just nice to go in there and just relax with members of the community and talk about those things that are important. And the Harmony Magnet Strings Orchestra was there. It had a really nice ambiance, and we were able to have a nice evening and recognize people that do great work in our community. And among those, we had, the Small Business Award was Oasis with Ryan and his family and his team there. And it was just really heartfelt. And we also had the Woman of the Year, Rhonda Harvey, which is the Helping One Woman How and Hope, Helping One Person Everywhere, The Antlers of Hope, just a great story of community, a great story of family, and really pointing towards our Lord and Savior, and talking about what's so important in our lives to remember to be centered on. And it was, it came together with Dennis Townsend getting the Man of the Year. And it was always an inspiration when you have a man like Dennis that really is a pillar of the community and a leader in the church and a leader in the county. And just to watch Taha, and we're at odds a lot, Taha and I, we have a lot of difference of opinion, but to watch him tell that heartfelt story about Dennis, it really brought back a lot of memories from when I met his dad. And it was just a really nice night, and it was well done. The Porterville Chamber of Commerce has really did an outstanding job with that, recognizing the entrepreneurship and our local leadership. And I just wanted to call that out because it's just an awesome thing. And we have some new leaders with Scott is wearing this great white suit. He stood out. His was all black, and he's in this white suit. And they go, Scott, great job, Scott. It's nice to see you here tonight. And I see Breyer out there. Great job, Breyer. Well done. It was just an amazing evening. It was a lot of uplifting conversations and, and a lot of spirit in that of the community. And I know that the chamber and the Rotary and Oasis are all going to be sponsors of the Christmas parade, and that's coming up here in Thursday. So I hope to see you guys out there. It's just a really great time of the year to count our blessings and focus on the things that are important and really just, you know, center ourselves on the community and, and the positive spirit that we have. And I just wanted to say a few nice things about that. And I also really want to say something really nice about Fred Beltran. I know the Porterville Rescue Mission, it does yeoman's work. I think it was the 12th year that Fred was out there with Susan Uptane and, and all the others that are not named in the newspaper article. But they're really saving, they're helping people, and they're saving souls. They're getting people off the street, and they're helping them. We have, I think, at least six of them that are going to college. And Susan told me this great story about when we were going through the bus, back and forth, the bus situation, that they had just taken the position to buy those guys some bikes so that they could get to and from class, and they didn't have to worry about the transportation, and they were very independent. But it's great to see that there, there's people that are getting off the street in our community, or providing the services, and it's a faith-based service, and it's really the one that works. And I really just want to emphasize that what a great time of the year is to focus on those things and the good works that those people do at the Porterville Rescue Mission, too. So I just want to say those things, Mayor. Thank you.
Well done, Vice Mayor. You got an applause. I think that may be a first. Okay, well, for myself, the 19th, November 19th, I went to Primavera's ribbon cutting or a celebration of her becoming the president of Porterville College. She is the 10th president. And it's really exciting times to see Porterville College on the path they are. We've seen the expansion with the softball fields, baseball fields, the Sage or SOG building. I don't know quite how to pronounce that quite yet, but Porterville College is becoming a destination on the southeastern side of Tulare County. And it's neat to see that happening in our hometown. And so want to congratulate Primavera and wish her the best of luck and continue to grow at Porterville College. On the 20th, I attended the adult school here on Olive. Director Torres gave me a tour. And it's just amazing to see the numbers, the amount of adults that go and take some of the classes there, like the medical assistant program, nurse assistant program, pharmacy technician, surgical technician. And all of these classes, we're getting 90% graduation rate out of these classes. And so I just hats off to Porterville Adult School and what they're doing. And learned a lot of things. They're not tied in with PUSD. Yes, they're, they're under that umbrella, but their funding sources are federal. And, and some of those with the change in administration and the direction that our country's in, some things are on the cutting block. So I'd like to see this continue to be funded at least because they are doing really great things here in our community for people that are in need of education, higher education. The 28th, I attended a Christmas tree lighting here in front of City Hall. And it's just really an honor to come together with the community. Councilman Beltran, I saw you out there as well. It's amazing to see the people come together and celebrate the birth of Jesus Christ right here in our community. It's, 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 it's bold, and we're unafraid. And that's the founding principles that our nation was founded upon, and it's really the heart of this city. And so just a great honor to be a part of that tradition this year. And then, you know, I wanted to address the PATA meeting with the tribe. You can go and watch it on, on YouTube. The tribe is one of our great partners, and they're, they're making tremendous donations to our, our community. They just had a golf tournament, raised over a hundred grand. And they're, they're donating to our sports programs, donating to the city for the library or fire department. I mean, just amazing things and really great leadership out of Shainato, the chair, Neil Pyron, and you see it from the dais here in the meeting. And, you know, they, they talked about community and growing our community together. And, and I know that they're very interested in, in purchasing the OHV park, and they want to do a lease agreement for our sports complex. And I just want to be very transparent with the people and what's going on behind the scenes to the best of my ability. But I, I, for myself as a mayor, I really can't go down that path until we fix some of the issues with the MOU between the city and the tribe. We, the tribe currently does not pay for fire services, and that's coming, we're, we are subsidizing that. And so as they want to continue to grow, I support that. I want to see the tribe grow. I want to see it grow with the city. But I cannot support selling more land without having the right resources in place. Not only that, but, you know, they, they have gone to work without even communicating with the city as far as they're going to build a convention center and a hotel, and they're not communicating. And so those are our real impacts on our sewage and water infrastructure that we really have to be concerned about. And, you know, as a taxpaying city, it's in, in the city of Porterville, we're the highest taxed city in Tulare County, one of the highest taxed cities in the state of California at a 9.25% tax rate. Those funds go 80, 90% go to our police officers and our firefighters. If we're taxed at that rate, how is that fair to us to subsidize on fire? There was comments about the road and potholes. We fill it all through across the city. And so I know they're feeling those impacts. And, and, you know, I want to remain a strong partner with them. You know, there's competition coming with the Hard Rock Casino, and then I've heard rumor of more casinos coming in that area. And so I want to help the tribe grow because it's going to benefit our community as well. And so I don't want to fight over pennies when we could be doing great things as a community. I want to see the sports complex grow. I want to see softball fields and baseball fields out there. And I'll tell you, if, if we did sell the OHV park, that's where I would try to direct that money, as long as my colleagues would support it. But I would like to see those funds put into the sports complex to upgrade, get us baseball fields and softball fields. I think that's a good trade. With that, I just, I want to leave the fact that we will continue to work together, just like when they called me about taco trucks or, or the swinging bridge that we have city staff working on. We want to remain solid partners. We want to grow together. And that's my message that I'd like to leave with, with there. Okay, with that, we'll move on to presentations. We have the Veterans' Homecoming Queen and Her Court. If you guys would come forward, please. Well, American Legion Post 20, Breyer, you guys have done it again. You found the most talented, prettiest young ladies in our community representing the city of Porterville in American Legion Post 20. It's a great honor to have you guys here today. Ma'am, do you have words?
Yes, I do.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Before I begin, I want to thank the mayor and the city council for inviting us, the 2025 to 2026 Veterans Homecoming Court, to be here today. It is a great honor to share with you the activities we have participated in, and we appreciate the support from our community as we take initiatives to plan for the year ahead. I also want to take a moment to appreciate the American Legion Post 20 for their continuous support as we look forward to furthering our collaboration with them this year. In addition, I want to express my sincere gratitude to our court. Serving alongside such dedicated and inspiring young ladies has truly been a privilege. Since 1946, the Veterans Homecoming Court has continued making positive impacts in our community and has greatly encouraged honoring veterans who have shown great bravery and sacrifice to our country. Our overall goals as a court are to advocate for the veterans, raise funds, raise funds to support the Central Valley Honor Flight, and empower our community. It is truly an honor to be the Veterans Homecoming Queen and Miss Porterville. To highlight some of our recent activities, we were invited to visit Burton Elementary School to share the reason behind our celebration for Veterans Day. We had wonderful interactions with the students, and it truly reminded us of the positive impact that we have on our youth. A new event we attended this year was the Veterans Appreciation Lunch through an invitation by the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints to honor the veterans in our community. We were able to highlight our experiences of the pageant and share insight into our family members who have served. We then made our initial debut in our beautiful city during the Veterans Day and Bandarama. In just a few days, we will be waving on a parade float at the Christmas parade to celebrate our community. Upcoming later this month, we will be participating in the candlelight tours at the Zallet House. My court and I have many activities planned this year, and we are excited to support our veterans and inspire future generations. We have our annual duties coming up in the spring with Memorial Day Weekend, Reading Across America, and many more events that we will keep you informed about as they get finalized. On behalf of the Veterans Homecoming Court, we are proud to represent our veterans and the amazing city of Porterville. Thank you.
Thank you, Gianna. Well, like I said, American Legion Post 20, Breyer, amazing job. Beautifully young ladies and talented, no doubt. And the best of Porterville. You are the future. And so it's a great honor to have you all here today with us. So we're going to do a little different than we did last year. We got a little stuff going on here. So in recognition for being selected to serve on the 25, 26 Veterans Homecoming Court and your honorable committee to represent your community, the Porterville City Council recognizes Emma Thompson, third attendee. And if you would just come forward with Councilman Beltran. Elena Karnoff, second attendee. Councilman Green, you stay with her, sir. Emily Garcia, first attendee. Ava Gurey, princess. And so what we're doing different this year is we will be presenting the Queen and Her Court a check for $2,500 in, in recognition of what you guys are doing. And to, to you, you guys spend it how you choose, but it's a great honor. And with that, the Queen, I'm going to read your plaque right now before I come down and recognize you. But in recognition of your dedication and service to the city of Porterville as their reigning Miss Porterville Queen for 2025, 2026, we hereby commend you, Gina Robrot, for accepting the commitment to fulfill your duties and act as a representative of our, of your community. December 2nd, 2025, Porterville City Council. Well, to my colleagues, if, if you'd like any comments, you have any comments, Councilman Rivas?
All I can say is thank you, make us proud. They selected the most beautiful women in the, in Porterville and the county in my eyes. But thank you so much. It's an honor to just be next to you guys and join this prestigious event. Thank you.
Vice Mayor McCurvy?
I would just like to echo those sentiments and just say thank you very much for coming out and taking a picture with us. And we look forward to seeing you at the parade and seeing you around town and, and just watching all the great work that you guys do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Green?
Yeah, I just echo the same sentiments, but the girls, I mean, these girls are stunning, aren't they? Yes, they're gorgeous. Thank you for coming out. We had a great time with you. Thank you, girls.
The best of Porterville, right? Councilman Beltran?
Yes, it's, it's an honor to meet all of you. And I'm sorry I wasn't able to attend the actual talent and the show, but I hope this is a start of your future in service to the community in many aspects and breaking through that shell and standing in front of the stage, in front of, you know, public speaking and all that. Just congratulations in conquering that fear. And I hope this is a start of just many services that you guys have throughout your high school and hopefully college career. So congratulations.
Thank you, ladies. Okay, we have Employee of the Month, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council have asked Deputy City Manager Donnie Moore to give the presentation.
All right, is Robert here? Come on over here. Just right here, it's perfect. Yeah, yep. Robert Reese III was employed by the city of Porterville as a part-time parks maintenance aide for the Parks and Leisure Services Department in March 2023. He was quickly promoted to Parks Maintenance Worker One six months later. Robert was promoted to his current position as Parks Maintenance Worker Two in the spring of 2025. Some of Robert's many duties include maintaining the Zallet House garden, Veterans Park, assisting in special projects, and he's always one of the first to volunteer to fill in as a substitute custodian or perform, perform facility maintenance at City Hall and Centennial Plaza. Also, Robert came to the city with a background in welding. His welding skills have been utilized many, many times when having to fix things around the city. Robert is a very smart and very smart individual and catches on to things quickly. Robert always has a positive attitude and is an excellent communicator. He has proven to be a leader and mentor for those performing their community service hours with the Parks Division. Robert is known for his strong faith in God, always keeping God first in everything he does. He carries himself with integrity, humility, and respect. His supervisors describe him as dependable, hardworking, and someone who always takes pride in doing the job right. As for family, Robert stays very close to his mom, dad, sister, and nephew. They are proud to the dedication he brings to his job and to the city he serves. Outside of work, Robert enjoys fishing, barbecuing, family outings, and camping. Robert's favorite part of his work is hearing compliments from the community about how clean and well-maintained the parks looks. Knowing that families enjoy the facilities he maintains because of the effort he puts in brings him pride and motivation every day. Join me in congratulating the city of Porterville Employee of the Month for December 2025, Robert Reese III.
Well, Robert, I got to say Veterans Park's looking pretty good, and you're doing an outstanding job out there. We appreciate all the work. Is there a word you'd like to? Okay, I have a gift certificate for you, sir. Council, would you like to take a picture? Okay, I have a gift certificate for you, sir. Council, would you like to take a picture? Yeah, Robert, I was out at Veterans Park looking at where that battleship-themed playground's going to be going, and I thought it looked really great. So keep up the great work out there. Thank you, sir. Okay, we have one more presentation, and that is the City Employee Recognition. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna actually move to the front of the podium if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, members of the council, you know, it's an exciting time for the city. With that, we have some new faces within our department. We've also had some promotions. And so I wanted to recognize these individuals to you. So there's about 16 of them. And Councilman Green, I got your back because the first person I want to recognize is Donnie Moore. A couple of months ago, he was appointed Deputy City Manager and also serves in a dual role where he also serves as the Director of Parks and Leisure. Donnie has been with the city for 26 years. And so, Donnie, I know you didn't want to stand up for Councilman Green, but come and join me. And as I introduce each staff member, if they could also come up to the front as well, and we have a small gift for you. Sticking with Parks and Leisure, we have had a promotion within that department. Becky Haraghi has been with the city, actually two times. And if you put both stints together, she's been with the city for nearly 29 years. And so Becky has been promoted as the City Librarian. So come on up, Becky. Next, I want to recognize Russell Isom, who's also been with the city for a long time. So Donnie's been with the city 26 years, Becky in combination, 29 years. Russell has been with the city 24 years. He previously served as the Shop Superintendent. In my career, I worked really closely with Russell. And over the last month, he's now been appointed as Director of Transportation. And we're excited to have him part of the team. So, Russell, I know he's going to pay me back for having him stand up and be recognized, but it's important that these folks be recognized. Keeping with the theme of long-term employees, this next gentleman has been with the city for 33 years as the wastewater treatment facility superintendent to field service manager. And he was on the doorstep of retirement. Actually, I'd submitted his papers, but we were able to have some good conversations, and he really wants to help the city and so much that he postponed his retirement and applied for the position of Public Works Director, and he was selected. So I want to present to you Robert Alver as your Public Works Director. Okay, moving on to our Police Department. Currently, we have, and I'd like to introduce to you our interim Chief of Police, Bobby Radar, who's been with the, has over 16 years of law enforcement, and we're excited that he's joined our organization. With that, we've also have some new employees within the Police Department. I want to introduce to you Captain Brian Clower. We also have Officer Oscar Jimenez. Officer Isaiah Garcia. Real brand-new, we have Officer Jaden Johnson. And last but not least, within the Police Department, we want to introduce you to the department's Administrative Assistant to the Chief of Police, Katie Jones. Yeah, if you could make room. Now we're moving on to the Fire Department. And Mayor, we'll have a great picture after this.
It's beautiful. Keep going, sir.
Okay, keep going. The Fire Department has been busy under the direction of Chief Cockburn. And so we've had some vacancies within that department. With that brings opportunity. And with that, we have two new Battalion Chiefs. The first one is Matt Dunney and Jake Rayburn. And then moving on to the Captain position, we have two new captains, excited with these promotions. The first one is Koi Farnsworth, and second, Koi. Awesome, thanks, Koi. And also recently promoted to Captain Sabrina Swartout.
Swartout?
Swartout. Probably butchered the last name, so, okay, that sounds good. We're heavy on the right-hand side, but we just got a couple more. Oh, thanks. I appreciate it. With that, we have two Engineer Promotions. The first one is Nick Sossida. And then finally, for Mayor and Council members, the last promotion that I want to recognize tonight is for another Engineer, Alexis Aion. We've got a big team here that serve in the city. I appreciate all the hard work that they do. And I'll turn the time back over to you.
Well, I, you know, I asked for recognition for some folks, but I didn't realize we had so many promotions and growth. This is awesome. It's great to see all of you. Police, Fire, I call you guys Porterville's finest for a reason. You're our first responders, great people. It's a great honor to have you in front of us today, but it's also a great honor to have you serving the people of Porterville. And then as far as the Parks, Library, Sewage Plant, Transportation, you guys are the organs that make our city run. And so you have the muscle around you here tonight, but you guys are critical in what we do here in the city of Porterville. So it's a great honor to have you all here tonight. And I think we could fit a picture, yeah? Let's do it.
Just stand right here. Yeah, or else we'll have to stand on somebody's shoulders.
Yeah, that might be a good idea.
Come on, Donnie, get in here.
Oh, stop, honey. It's only been 40 minutes. All glory's God's. Okay, with that, we will move into Oral Communications. This is the opportunity to address the council in any matter of interest, whether on the agenda or not. Please address all items not scheduled for public hearing at this time. Unless additional time is authorized by council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes. If you have a communication or oral communication, this is the time to come forward.
Good evening. I've lived in Porterville almost-
Could you please state your name for the record, ma'am?
No, I don't have to. It's not required. I've lived in Porterville for almost 50 years. The members of our community group collectively hold close to 50 years of experience working for the city of Porterville, as well as many years for other cities and public agencies. I personally spent 10 years sitting through Porterville City Council meetings as a staff member, watching how professional, informed decision-making is supposed to work. That's why what I've witnessed over the last year is so deeply troubling. In my opinion, this council is making decisions not based on data, policy, or the needs of the residents, but on personal theology and political ideology. That is not good governance. That is not how you lead a diverse city, and it is certainly not how you serve the people who elected you. We are asking firmly and respectfully for a return to professionalism, transparency, and decision-making rooted in community needs, not personal beliefs. Porterville deserves nothing less. Tonight, I'm here to ask for clarification on a number of items because many of us in this community feel unsettled, unheard, and increasingly unsure about the integrity and transparency of this council's actions. First, why are symbolic monuments and ideological projects receiving more attention than rebuilding the library, a vital public institution? You claim to cherish the library and prioritize its construction, but your actions say just the opposite. There has been no forward movement regarding the library for at least a year, no committee meetings, and seemingly no attempt to secure additional funding and grants, knowing that you would face a shortfall in construction funds. You can post 1,000 words on Facebook, but your actions speak louder than your words. Secondly, we're asking for clarity regarding the racist and homophobic emails sent by Ed McMurphy to Ben Ennis. Residents deserve to know, who in the city knew about this email? Was any investigation conducted? What safeguards exist to ensure that personal biases are not influencing public policy and public projects? We also need an explanation for the pattern we see where council members Rivas and Green consistently act as bookends in support of the opinions and decisions of council members Meister and McMurphy. Many residents feel unrepresented. So the question is simple. Are you voting your constituents' needs or merely affirming each other? Residents have witnessed rude behavior towards fellow council members by the mayor and vice mayor, as well as lecturing, condescension, and dismissiveness directed at residents during public comment. We ask, why does this council feel comfortable speaking down to the very people who elected you, as well as co-equal members of council who represent a segment of the city? And what steps will be taken to restore respect, professionalism on the council days? Oh, I've got more tonight.
Good evening, Karen Anderson. I just want to share a few thoughts regarding the library. Please don't shut your minds or close your ears, please. At most, if not all, council meetings, it seems that either the mayor or vice mayor makes comments on, quote, "what's best for the community." A place of learning, of expanding one's mind and experience in dealing with what's beyond Porterville would seem logical. If there were only some place where that could happen, a place where people could access computers for research, access actual books for knowledge or pleasure, magazines, newspapers. Hmm, wait a minute. A library can do that. It's a place where people can research history, both American and world, from a variety of sources and viewpoints. This would provide long-term, lifelong benefits to help ferret out truth from falsehoods and to discern bias. The council often, especially lately, emphasizes heritage of both Porterville and the United States. What better legacy could you leave than a beautiful library to last for generations? Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
My name is John Coffey, and my contact information is on record. At some point tonight, you will be voting on a new city ordinance, which could have very big consequences legally for the city. In my layman's opinion, it violates several California or federal laws. If you pass this ordinance, you will be opening the city to either state or federal lawsuits. Ms. Lou can give you better legal advice than I can. As I understand the laws, somebody suing the city would have to show harm, which probably would not be that hard to do, and they would have to sue for damages. Now let us suppose that they would ask for, oh, say the park just across the street and the building next to it to the north. Let's further assume that they would also ask for, say, $250,000 or more and would rename the park in honor of Harvey Milk, or simply call it, quote-unquote, Pride Plaza, and require the city to put up a very big flagpole and install a pride flag and donate the building to an organization promoting LGBTQ acceptance. Now personally, I think this would be just desserts for a city council, which has shown so much hostility toward part of the citizenry of Porterville. Some of you, probably, this is just the ramblings of some old man. But just to suppose, it was to come to pass. Remember, I have lived here through your endorsement of Proposition Eight several years ago, the unlawful decision of a, quote-unquote, Pride Month proclamation, and the calling for my death, as well as the entire LGBTQ plus community from this very lectern, in the biblical sense, by so-called, quote-unquote, Christians. By the way, on this final point, if you have any doubt, my husband has video proof. One last question for the city attorney. I know the city can be sued, but could this council also be sued severally and collectively? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coffey. All right, I'm not seeing anyone else. We'll move on. That's more like it.
That's more like it. You got it. Thank you, Jean Voff. Yes, you have everything on you need.
Yes, you have everything on you need on me. As more Porterville citizens are following these meetings, they're beginning to become alarmed at how their tax dollars are being spent. Recently, $3,970.96 was spent on three types of flags that were originally intended to represent law-abiding ideas and honor law-abiding events, but now are being used by groups with racist and non-constitutional intent. Earlier this year, you spent $117,263.50 on wrapping city buses and vans, and including the slogan, "In God We Trust." These vehicles did not need a wrap or a repaint. They were representing Porterville. They had portable symbols on them. Here tonight, you want the authorized spending, $400,000, to build a playground equipment replicating a battleship. Just three examples so far of just a few things, but this has amounted to over a half a million dollars. Here tonight, you will review proposed ordinance established in Article 15 of the Porterville Municipal Code to include a future legal defense assistance program. How much is that going to cost? Who's going to decide whose legal defense should be paid for? Why? Now you want to use city tax money for other people's legal issues, like you did earlier this year? When did you get a lawyer's degree? Why? Why do you persist in spending Porterville citizens' tax money on your pet projects? Why not instead focus on rebuilding a new library that meets the needs of Porterville for the next generations? So many other necessary Porterville needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Help him with the mic, Brock.
All right.
Here you go. Go ahead and speak.
Good evening, City of Porterville. This is Luis Gonzalez. I would like to discuss in a neutral tone about Item 16, considering purchasing a battleship playground for almost $400,000, and considering the distribution for ADA connectivity for $15,000. I understand that we are coming up to our 250th anniversary of the American Revolution. And I, like a lot of Americans, are proud to be American. However, the most patriotic acts are not done by lifting an architect, an infrastructure, that would symbolize patriotism more than it is by giving the citizens of Porterville what they desire. Rebuilding a library, focusing on road infrastructure. There's been countless amounts of accidents reported on the Porterville Quarter each day. I believe that symbols such as the playground can be prone to climatic disasters, such as fire and flooding. However, the decisions made for our residents and our citizens in Porterville will be much more indestructible, and will leave a mark for the people of Porterville for generations to come. So please reconsider on what you guys are budgeting for.
Thank you, Luis. Russell, before you go, City Manager Tree, heard tonight four times now about the library, and I know this is something that's on the minds of all constituents of Porterville, not just the folks here in the chambers tonight. And it's something that's been in the works for five years now. So multiple councils have been working on this. But can you give just a brief update, what's coming in the future?
Yeah, sure, Mayor. Well, two weeks ago, the council provided some direction to staff. Since that time, staff is preparing a staff report to bring to council with the recommendation on proceeding forward with the library at our meeting on December 16th. With that, I mean, there's still some ongoing strings that need to be tightened up. But, yeah, staff is preparing an item to be brought forth for council's consideration next meeting.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for that information. I think that's good for the community here as well.
Mayor, may I comment?
I'll give you an opportunity after oral communication. Go ahead, Russell.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you very much. Russell Benkort from Springville. Good information to know. I look forward to hopefully expanding on that this Friday. I also wanted to thank you for that post that you put out on the library, because you said that conversations about it are going to continue. Because, as was mentioned earlier, this is why everyone is frustrated. There hasn't been any conversations. We talk about we want a conversation, but we never had one. And here's the issues that you didn't clear up. Because there have been issues. October 21st, 2025 council meeting, and I encourage everyone to go back and watch the whole thing. Six something hours long. People spoke about the building of the library, and you yourself had said, "This is just political theater because we don't have the funds." But if we don't know, it's not political theater. It's asking questions. It's coming to you guys. Hey, give us some answers. This is what we want. This is what we're fighting for. You did say, all five of you, were working on ways to build it, that we lost two firefighters and the crown jewel of our community, and that's what we agree with. That's why we want it built. Mr. McCurvy had said, "We keep hearing about this grandstanding on the library. We have to find some creative ways to fund the library." Yes, that's why we're here. Let's figure it out together. He said, though, "This playground," because it was during the playground, he said, "If this playground costs $500,000 or $5 million, it's not going to help get a library anytime soon." I disagree with that. And that's why we need to continue to have conversations. In fact, I think it kind of woke you up because somewhere in there, Mayor, you said, "We can always look to be better, and that includes myself." I do agree with that. McCurvy said, "We all need to work together for the good, and we don't always agree, but we have to be civil to each other, and we can't be condescending and talking down to each other, and let's work on that." I'll promise I'll work on that. If you'll promise you'll work on that. And that's, yeah, and I'm glad you're nodding that because we're going to hold you to that, and we should be held to that. But then you go on and say, you reverse all that that you said, and you said, "But I'm not taking back about this grandstanding because this thing about the library, if it's not a political grandstanding, it's ignorance." Well, you can't call people ignorant if you haven't informed them. You shouldn't. So I'm just asking this. I know when we take a break, you guys go back, you use your restroom, we use the restroom, we get a drink of water. How come you don't come out and just shake our hand and say, "Thanks for being here"? Instead of just talking to the people that politically- I don't align with any of you guys, but it's okay. We got to work together. This is how we're going to get the library built. There's people here that have plans, funding mechanisms, that would help get this done, and I'm glad to hear this. And I look forward to Friday, meeting with you, and seeing what our plans are going to entail. Because this is something that it is, a crown jewel, and it's going to be even better. It's going to be a hero's library, is really what it's going to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Russell. And I think you're misinformed. He didn't say Friday. Next council meeting. Next council meeting. Oh, yes, yes. Friday first Coffee got you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name's Tahas Ale. Address on file. Thank you for, first and foremost, stepping up and being public servants. A lot comes your way. Information's important. You know, I'll be first and foremost. A lot of times I come up here, I don't have the information that you're all privileged to. And I really appreciate you, Mayor, for giving the opportunity to the city manager to disclose that information. A lot of people came before me and have said a lot of things that I echoed, that I agree with. But specifically, I was hoping that you would pull Item 3 off the consent, the fuel island concrete. I noticed that we got a lot of people didn't respond. We only have one bid. I know it's a fuel thing. I know a little bit about fuel. I'm just curious if it needs to be a fuel vendor or if it's just concrete, just basic concrete. And if it is basic concrete, maybe we can get a local contractor to do that. I know that's something the council's been looking at. How do we bring jobs back into the local community? So I know we'll have a public hearing. I think the 10 will be public hearing, I think, will be an opportunity for us to speak on that, I think. So I'll wait until then. And where are we at here? I think there was something else later. Yeah, number 16, the playground. You made a comment earlier. Yeah, we do have some of the highest sales tax in the area. I know a little bit about sales tax. I collect it, and I send it in. I just sent a check in for $20,000 before I walked in today for last month for one of my locations. I'm just wondering if there's a way we can just pay our fire department, our police, and what we do on what we bring in as a city, and not depend on bonds and these one-time things that are just supposed to be one-time things. And I know the idea of it is we can use it to buy his playground equipment. We can use it to do this, but people have talked about how you buy something, but then you got to maintain it. So that increases the cost. And so I just hope there's a way that maybe this council could just really reconsider the things that we're trying to buy, this playground. Can we just hold off on it and just focus on paying down what we owe and being fiscally conservative? I love seeing the ladies here, and I love the idea of giving money away, but it's, I'm going to be a little selfish. You're giving my money away. If you want to be charitable and pull out money out of your own pocket, go for it. That's a great idea. But we don't have it. We don't have it. And there are people in this community who would love to write a $250 check to give to these ladies. Just ask us. Ask us to give it to you. Ask me to give that money. Don't just take it for my taxes. Please, I ask you. Please stop this, what I call unnecessary spending. Please. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tah.
My name is Craig Martin, Porterville. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Councilman. Tonight, I want to address something deeper than flags. I want to talk about conduct, responsibility, and what it means for a council representative for everyone. According to the city's own press release, the seven flags downtown were chosen by the Porterville Heritage Committee in association with Porterville Historic Museum and the local DAR chapter. But the Heritage Committee is an ad hoc committee with no published membership list at all. The August 5th, 2025 Agenda Packet for the City Council shows two sitting council members were appointed to that council. The city says the flags were meant to bring American life downtown, highlight key moments in American founding, and to tie Porterville's 100th year as a charter city to America's 250th. They also link the display to Bells Across America to provide walking tours explaining the flag's history and its symbolism. This will also involve local schools throughout the years and the tours. But the issue before us is not accidental. It was a deliberate choice. Across 250 years of American history, there are hundreds of neutral educational flags that could have been supporting those goals, but none of them were chosen. Instead, this committee, with two council members, chose all seven flags, and the majority of those flags carry strong, modern, negative associations that do not represent the full population of Porterville. When leaders elevate symbols they know carry modern political meaning, that is not historical commemoration. That is using public authority to push a particular message, and that is a betrayal of the basic obligation of government. A city council has a duty to exercise public trust, responsibility, impartiality, and respect for all its residents. Choosing symbols that speak only to a narrow segment is not serving the public. It is serving a private agenda. This wasn't coincidence. It was intentional. It was done through a committee, and done through a committee the public cannot fully see. That kind of conduct has no place in public service. This isn't about right or left. It's about ethics, honesty, and the standards we should expect from everyone in power. Porterville deserves leadership that chooses unity over division, transparency over signaling, and representation over personal agendas. Every resident deserves a city where symbols downtown represent all of us and a city we want to be, not the modern political messages selected by two people behind unlisted committees. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to consent calendar. All consent calendar items. You guys got to get with it. We got city business to do tonight. He's disabled. Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Not disabled. I had a knee replaced last year.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, and that's why I was wearing a face mask because we were, I mean, you guys just, I don't know. Let me go ahead and do this. My name is Grant Wagner. I'm in Porterville. I'm not disabled. I am retired. I'm asking you guys to please prioritize what residents have been asking year after year since the terrible tragedy. Fund fully and construct the library. From what we hear, by your own estimates, there's about a $10 million shortfall. Some of this shortfall could be offset immediately by discontinuing or pausing some nonessential ventures like the Washington Monument and your battleship-themed playground, the ongoing funds that the Heritage Committee is using, additional street projects that were never part of the original capital improvement program. These are your choices. They're not mandates. They're choices, and every dollar, regardless of what we've heard from some of you, every dollar spent is a dollar away from these other necessities. What additional funding sources has the city been able to pursue? We don't know. It hasn't been transparent. But it appears that not much has been done. I'm looking forward to hearing more about this. But guys, there's federal grants and state grants and foundational funding and private library construction grants and partnerships with organizations that routinely support literacy and community infrastructures. Communities across California secure millions of these sources every year. So why not us? A funding gap this large requires action. And to your point, it requires creativity and initiative. It doesn't require silence. A funding plan was provided to the city clerk for Mr. Beltran, who's on the Library Commission, as some sources for you to pursue. We've also heard discussion, possibility about having a library in phases. It's a no-go, guys. Phasing increases construction costs due to inflation, duplicating mobilization, re-engineering inefficiencies, stopping and starting. It prolongs the disruption to the community. You know, and the biggest thing is that if it's only partially built, when will it ever be built? Our community deserves better than a partial solution. We want a full library. Please reevaluate your use of general funds. The general fund represents our values of what is necessary and what is optional and what can be delayed. Our library is a necessity.
Thank you, sir.
I'll keep this brief to avoid the redundancy. Losing a full-service library for this long has hit students, low-income families, and job seekers the hardest. The years after 2020 have been a double hit for Porterville kids. COVID shut down classrooms, and at the same time, our main public library burned down and has never been fully replaced. State and national data show Porterville Unified Schools fell further behind the average in English and math between 2019 and 22, and local high school's English scores are still being flagged as having declined compared to prior years. That is exactly what national research predicts when communities lose access to a public library. Reading and math scores drop for nearby students and stay lower for years, especially in non-metro areas like ours. Leaving Porterville without a full library for more than five years is not just inconvenient, it is a direct hit to the educational outcomes of local children and teens. City budgets are about priorities. When residents see money and energy going into new cosmetic projects while the library project is delayed or put on hold, it feels like the future of our students and working families is negotiable. A library is not just extra. It is a core educational infrastructure, just like classrooms. Sorry, I want to be quick. Thank you.
No, don't be sorry. You're welcome. Okay, Vice Mayor. Okay, Vice Mayor, you had some comments, go ahead, sir.
Oh, well, I just, you know, I I've said, I've been on the other side, I understand, there's a lot of things that you guys can't know. And there's a lot of spirited conversations that happen in confidence and confidentiality, and they have to stay there until we can come bring that to you, and so. Understand your frustration, but you know, when you're doing negotiations and things, those things have to be done in a certain way, and so that's professional, that's the right thing to do. And you can't know everything all the time, but the debate that we've had the most is the recommendation for the library was for one that was going to be very expensive. And probably in the forty million dollar range. And that was the original, right, and so over the years, and we've all gone through this together because, you know, I went to the library as a kid. I learned karate there, I understand that the love of the library. And to the all of the rhetoric around the council doesn't care about the library is very, very disconnected, but. The what I want to say is that we have a certain amount of money that we can spend on that, and I hear a lot of. Great comments about grants and those things, and we have pursued those things. Uh, but we're going to come up with probably in the neighborhood of twenty million dollars is what we're going to be able to come up with. A lot of the money that we could have spent on that library was spent in other places over the last five years. And I would just say it's not cosmetic, the things that we do in our city when we fix the roads and we fix the downtown, it might be perceived that way to some. But the the idea here is we're building a community center, and that's a twenty-five million dollar price tag. And we drained most of our Measure I funds to do that. We recently did that, now, the library is a community center. And we have a community center being built right now, and it's going to be for all of us, and we used our money for that. And that money could have went towards the library and closed that gap, but we built the community centers, now, we're gonna have a community center, we're gonna get a library too. We what, we got to put those things in perspective. Now, you have to understand that this is not just this council. We have a history here of. Issues with money and we understand that, you know, when when this council shut things down in twenty twenty. And shut down small businesses and hurt churches and spent two million dollars on vaccines incentives and. Wasted tons of money on all sorts of things, probably in the thirty million dollar range, we could have had that library built. Now, we're in a situation where we went through in July, if you guys go back and look in July, this council spent four and a half hours. And it's on YouTube, we went line by line through the whole budget. And we looked at all of this stuff, and we found a lot of things that we didn't want to find. And there might be more issues in there, but we're still digging, and the issue is that we were not paying for the golf course for the last ten years. We were not paying for the benefits for our employees for the last ten years. We have a thirteen million dollar hole in our budget that was left over, and it's buried in a commentary in a two thousand seventeen review of the budget. And everyone was saying everything was fine, but now you have a new council, and now it's the new council's fault that we have some financial issues. Go back and look at July and look at the line by line, we went through this and we reprioritized everything, and we had to go back and do a deep dive and figure out how to be creative so that we can get the community center done. And then start working on the library, and you guys have to understand that. There is no way we can even do the library until that settlement is done, and it's not done yet, it's still not done. But we have some ideas, and there's some things that will come out later that we can, we'll be able to disclose, and we've had some spirited debates on this, but I think we all agree, we want a library, it's just. How big, that's going to be the question, and it's going to be when, that's going to be a question, but we have a library right now. We have a library right now, it might be in a temporary status, but all the stuff about how we're not learning to read, we have facilities. For everybody, and we're bridging the gap, and that's smart, and the city's doing that, and we're continuing that from the last council. And, you know, I understand there's frustration out there, but there's a lot of emotion here, and there seems to be a lot of disconnects too. So I would just come out and explain a few things and say, you know, take a deep breath, things are going to get done. And we're not going to get, we're not going to make everybody happy, but if you look at these things objectively. You're going to be able to see for yourself that they're, the council is not hiding anything from you, this, we have been the most transparent, we put the whole budget. On the record for all of you to look at, you can go look at it right now and you can go and study it, we did that in July, and you can hear all the comments around that. And we've, we've talked about this a lot because we want to deliver the forty million dollar library, but we just can't without going into debt. And the majority of this community doesn't want to add more taxes and more bonds and go into debt. And that's the issue, and we understand your frustration, it's, it's, it's understandable, but you have to be informed too, when I say you're ignorant. I'm not saying that as a pejorative, I'm saying that as ignorance, you got to go look at it. I've been studying it, I'd be happy to talk with you guys about it, everyone says I'm not approachable, I'll talk to each and every one of you. Taha, you were late today, I had a great conversation about what that talk that you did the other night. And it, I was moved by how your leadership was at the Chamber of Commerce, and you weren't here to hear it, I'm gonna have to talk to you. But the point is, you guys, we are approachable, we don't want to politicize these issues, you don't need to be politicizing flags and silly things like that. We are working on getting you a library, and there's going to be a library delivered in this community, and I would predict that it's done within the next three years.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, uh, is, I opened it up to the Vice Mayor, does any of you else, does any of my other colleagues have comments?
Mayor, can I, don't do that since we don't have it on the agenda and I don't want to have, create a discussion among the council on an un-agendized item.
I appreciate the legal advice. Okay, with that, we'll move into consent calendar, all consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these matters unless a request is made, in which the item will be removed from the consent calendar, all items removed from consent calendar. For further discussion will be heard at the end of scheduled matters. We have six consent items, how does council want to go for it? I'm not hearing anything that wants to be polled, uh. I'm looking for a motion.
I'd motion that we follow staff recommendations.
Okay, items one through six, we have a first, I'll second that motion. Okay, uh, if there's no other discussion, we'll call for the vote. Passes five zero, okay, moving on to our first public hearing of the night, uh, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, we have four public hearings tonight, the first one is in regards, uh, first public hearing is in regards to the Villas at Winding Creek, tentative subdivision map and conditional use permit. I've asked Director Calderon to provide the staff report.
Good evening, everyone, on February twelfth, twenty twenty-five, the city received an application for the Villas at Winding Creek subdivision. The eight-point-seven-six acre site located between Wisconsin Street and Indiana Street along the Poplar Ditch proposes thirty-two residential lots. New internal streets, sidewalks, street lights, and nine thousand two hundred and forty-one square feet of open space, including ten-foot trail and twelve-foot service road. The property is resident, is designated as low-density residential in the Porterville twenty thirty general plan and Zoned RS two, which is low-density residential, the RS two zone requires six thousand. Square foot minimum lot sizes, but the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit under Porterville Development Ordinance Section. Two zero one point zero four C to allow lots ranging from five thousand forty-six to eight thousand two hundred and forty-two square feet. The project's density is three-point-six-five unit per acre, units per acre below the six-point-oh units per acre maximum allowed. The project must meet Porterville Development Ordinance Series six, uh, six hundred entitlement requirements, including Article six oh four. For the conditional use permit, Article six eleven environmental view, as well as general land division standards under Series four hundred, including Article four hundred. Uh, provision, general provisions and Article four two tentative subdivisions. Tribal consultation was conducted from August fifth to September fourth, twenty twenty-five pursuant to Government Code Section six five three five two point. Three and Public Resources Code twenty-one zero eight zero point three one. Um, one response was received from Table Mountain Rancheria on August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five stating that the site is outside their area of interest. Environmental review was also included, um, an initial study mitigated negative declaration prepared under SEQA. Encirculated through the State Clearinghouse from October thirty-first through November thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Mitigation is required for biological resources, cultural resources, tribal, uh, cultural resources and geology and soils. A common letter was received from the Department of Toxic Substances Control on November fifth, twenty twenty-five. The letter provided information on the required, on the requirements of further analysis for agricultural land uses proposed or rezoned. For residential use in regard to contaminants of concern. The tentative map complies with California Subdivision Map Act. P D O Series four hundred land division and general plan land use circulation requirements. Staff found no applicable denial findings under P D O Section four hundred point zero four. And overall, the project provides needed housing aligns with city's general plan and zoning with the uh, conditional use permit for reduced lot sizes. And meets an environmental tribal consultation subdivision and public notice requirements. The recommendation before council today is that you hold a public hearing to receive comments on the Villas at Winding Creek residential development project. Adopt the draft resolution adopting the I S M N D and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Adopt the draft resolution approving the conditional use permit and adopt the draft resolution approving the tentative subdivision map with conditions. And staff is available for comments, uh, uh, questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Director Calderon, uh, with that, we will open the public hearing at seven fifty, if you have any comments, please come forward at this time.
Greg Sheldon, eighty-eight, North Wolfher Drive, I'm not afraid of saying where I live. Port Hualieno, um, I know this piece of property, I looked at it a long time ago, it's kind of out there about between Wisconsin and Indiana, out there, um, the south, the west side of town. Got a little slough that runs through it, I looked at the different incarnations of the map, and this last one is pretty nice, kind of balances, you know, tasteful. Not too cramped, not, not trying to squeeze every dollar out of it, every, so, so. Roads are 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 nice, they're not all straight and dried up, it's a good little, good little subdivision, small, kind of stuff we should be building down, thanks, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon, are there any other comments? Okay, I'm not seeing any, we will close the public hearing at seven fifty-one and bring it back to the council. Uh, I'll go ahead and start, you know. Just talking with developers and and the approach, this is a kudos to staff on this, I I really support the project, but. The kudos to staff, it it's great talking to developers and hearing developers say the, the, the positive turnaround. And that this go, I I don't see Javier here tonight, but Ms. Weaver, Ms. Calderon, uh, people working in these departments, oh, he's online, got you, uh, well. What what I hear is, instead of just no, we're working to figure out how to get to a yes. And and I love hearing that from our developers, people that are creating jobs and wealth in our community, great job to you guys, thank you, and continue to great work on that end. With that, um, it's great to see some homes, this looks like a development that I fully support, and I'll pass it off to my colleagues, Councilman Beltran, do you have any comments? Councilman Green? Uh, Councilman Rivas?
I just have one question, it's, is this going to be a thirty-two lot project? That's a proposal? No, that's all I have.
Okay, Vice Mayor McCurby, okay, with that, uh, I will make the motion to go with staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, and we'll call for the vote. Who, oh, there it is, passes five zero, okay, moving on to our second public hearing, uh, agenda item number eight, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, the second public hearing tonight is in regards to Crayola Corner. Uh, modification of conditional use permit, and I'll turn the time back over to Director Calderon.
Thank you, the Crayola Corner daycare, um, located at four twenty Northeast Street has operated since authorization of the conditional use permit ten dash eighty-eight. On January third, nineteen eighty-nine, the original approval allowed childcare activities only on the first floor per Fire Marshal conditions, and in late nineteen eighty-nine. A five hundred and forty-five square foot accessory structure was converted into a classroom through a building permit, though this expansion should have gone through a C U P modification. The applicant now proposes expanding the main building to, uh, a three, I mean, with a three hundred square foot kitchen, three hundred and ninety-two square foot balcony and three hundred and ninety-two. Square foot patio and expanding the accessory structure by nine hundred and twenty-five square feet, increasing it to one thousand four hundred and twenty-two square feet total. On September tenth, twenty twenty-five, the project review committee determined that this expansion requires a modification to the original C U P ten dash eighty-eight. And under Porterville Development Ordinance, the use of this classification would be a daycare center and is not permitted you, uh, use in this R M three zone, so. Um, therefore, the use is currently non-conforming and any expansion must follow the P D O Section three oh seven point oh six, which is classification of non-conforming uses. So under this three oh seven point zero six, the city council must determine whether the use qualifies as a class one or class two. The facility qualifies as a class one non-conforming use because it was legally established under C U P ten eighty-eight. The proposed expansion is not detrimental to public health, safety or welfare and must comply with all city standards. The project is consistent with the general plan and does not interfere with adopted plans. The minor expansion will not depress nearby property values and childcare is typically compatible with residents' show uses in areas. Strict application of zoning standards would not serve a useful purpose as the facility would remain an unclassified non-conforming use. And the fighting, uh, for class two non-conforming use, which is hazardous materials, nuanced impacts, incompatible uses, or sexually oriented businesses do not apply. The proposed accessory structure size is a thousand four hundred and twenty-two square feet, which exceeds the one thousand two hundred square foot maximum allowed. In residential districts, but the zoning administrator may authorize larger structures as, uh, previous approvals have allowed up to one thousand eight hundred square feet. Um, the conditional use permit findings, um, per P D O six oh four point oh four of the proposed expansion is that it supports general plan policies L G, L U G one, L U G three, L U. G five and economic development policies E D G two, E D G five and E D G, uh, G seven. And it's, it's consistent with R M three implementing zone, once classified as a class one non-conforming use and complies with all remaining, um, zoning requirements. The project is exempt from SEQA under SEQA Guideline Section fifteen three oh one, which is existing facilities, as it expands and existing use by less than ten thousand square feet. It serves by existing public, is is serviced by existing public infrastructure and is not located in a sensitive area. Notice of exemption will be filed with the Tillery County Clerk and State Clearinghouse upon project approval. So the recommendation before council tonight is to hold a public hearing to receive comments on the Crayola Corner C U P modification. Find that the proposed project is exempt from SEQA under SEQA Guideline Section fifteen three oh one. And classify the existing daycare as class one non-conforming use and adopt the draft resolution approving the modification to conditional use permit ten dash eighty-eight. For Crayola Corner, subject to the conditions of approval, and that concludes my report, staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Director Calderon, with that, we will open the public hearing at seven fifty-seven, if anybody has any comments, please come forward at this time. I'm not seeing anyone, we'll close the public hearing at seven fifty-seven, bring it back to the council, does council have any comments? Not seeing any, I'm just looking, looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendations, uh, one through four.
I'll second that motion, if there's no other discussion, I'll call for the vote. Passes five zero, okay, moving on to public hearing, uh, or agenda item number nine, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, this public hearing is in regards to adoption of ordinance approving a development agreement between the city of Porterville and Cannabis Express Incorporated. For the relocation of a retail cannabis dispensary at fourteen thirty-two West Olive, Unit A. On March eighteenth of this year, two thousand twenty-five, the city council approved the request from Premium Blossom, uh, doing business as Cannabis Express to relocate its. Existing cannabis dispensary from two hundred North Main Street to fourteen thirty-two West Olive, excuse me, West Olive Avenue, Unit A. As part of the action, the city council directed staff to prepare a development agreement and accompanying ordinance to allow Cannabis, Cannabis Express to begin. The state of California licensing process for the new location. Under Chapter fifteen, Article seven of the Porterville Municipal Code and Government Code Section six five eight six four, a cannabis business must have an approved development agreement. Tied to the specific property where the action occurs. Because development agreements run with the land and prior agreements for the main street location cannot be transferred. Therefore, a new development agreement must be adopted by ordinance for the Olive Avenue site. Cannabis Express will not operate from both, will not operate from both locations. Cannabis Express will not operate from both, will not operate from both locations. Once the state issues all required approvals and the Olive Avenue location is ready for operation, the existing main street location will cease operations and the new development agreement will govern all activity moving forward. The city attorney has prepared the attached draft ordinance, um, that attaches to the new development agreement as Exhibit A and includes a required statutory, statutory findings. The ordinance also includes C Q A findings under C Q A Guidelines, uh, Section fifteen three oh three for new construction or conversion of small structure and fifteen three oh one for existing facilities. With the tenant improvement work qualifying as categorically exempt, a public hearing is required prior to inter, prior to introduction of the draft ordinance. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the city council, one, conduct a public hearing to receive public comment regarding the proposed development agreement for the relocation of Cannabis Express to fourteen thirty-two West Olive, Unit A. Two, introduce and waive the first reading of the draft ordinance approving a development agreement between the City of Porterville and Cannabis, Cannabis Express. And then three, finally, direct staff to place ordinance on future agenda for second reading and adoption once formal ordinance numbering is assigned. That's the conclusion of staff's report, I do want to, um, let the council know that the, the applicant is not feeling well. Um, he did reach out to me today and wasn't, is not able to attend tonight, but he appreciates staff's, uh, efforts to get this item on, uh, the agendas in hopes that it'll be approved so he can start the process with the state.
Thank you City Manager, uh, with that, we will open the public hearing at eight oh one. If you have any comments, please come forward at this time. Okay, I'm not seeing any, so we will close the public hearing at eight oh one, bring it back to the council. Vice Mayor McCurvy, Councilman Beltran, you guys sit on the cannabis committee. Um, one of you guys want to go first, Councilman Beltran, do you have any comments?
Yeah, my understanding is this is basically a cut, uh, kind of a, I want to say exactly cut and paste, but this is in addition to some of the conversation we had in the committee meeting with uh, some of the changes that they were hoping to do at their new business, this is just basically giving them switching over the location of what they're doing now, so I just want to make sure, because I know there was some other discussion. So we've had this discussion for, people who are tuning in now, oh, gosh, five months ago, four months ago, it's been a while since this item came to us. Uh, it was a very good discussion, um, I will still highlight my concerns with the, um, being, the state regulates most of this, the, the city has, kind of like the, the building, uh, code. The city can make it more stringent, but we can't make it less and, and the requirement was no closer than six hundred feet, which is the, the owner cut the property line exactly six hundred feet from West Putnam School. Uh, so that was, you know, the minimum requirement, um, I didn't like that, I, I didn't think it should be that close, but uh, we, we fell back on that, the state requirement, uh, so it's legal. Uh, but I have another concern of it being adjacent to the Porterville Adult School. Just, you know, the, the mayor stated earlier about the great programs that they have there and individuals who had, um, whatever various issues of completing their high school, um, requirements and graduating from high school, um, or just further education will find themselves there. And although I didn't like all the dispensaries on Main Street, I don't like that concentration when we have parades and, and other downtown events. I just didn't like the proximity to these locations. And so, in that earlier vote, I, I voted no to that, but just on the record, I just want to, I still have those same concerns here. There have been no legal issues, criminal activity, anything, they've been a very good, um, a business. They've always followed the, the rules and regulations, so I, it's not about that. Uh, they're a good, the, good business. Um, I just don't like the proximity and that's just my own personal opinion on that. Um, so that's just my comments for that one, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Beltran, Vice Mayor McCurvy.
I just, I would just echo that, very well stated, Councilman Beltran, we had some spirited debates over this and, uh, I really appreciate those comments because I share those same concerns, we have a difference of opinion on a few minor things, but, uh, absolutely, uh, well stated and, uh, discussed and, and reminding everybody from that five months ago conversation. I would just say, if there were, um, that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you Vice Mayor McCurvy, uh, Councilman Green?
No, I don't have any comment, thank you Mayor.
Councilman Rivas?
No, I, I just want to say, I mean, to the lawyer, um, are we within legal ra, um, footage of the six hundred?
Yes.
Are we? Does that affect anything to do with the adult school?
We looked at that and the, it did not qualify under the statutes.
Of the statute of law, okay. Well, with that, I mean, I echo what Mr. Beltran and Mr. Vice Mayor said, but, you know, I, I took a tour of that place and, um, and they, they, uh, all we're doing is moving the, the business to the other, to the west of Olive, so, um, I looked at their, their, their plans and, and stuff and, um, from my personal opinion is, is, they got a very secure minded area, so, um, and I think they are, are very well, um, it's going to bring work to the, uh, to the, to the community, so, I, I have no problem at this point in time with, uh, with, uh, with this situation here, so, I'm going to make a motion, if nobody wants to say anything.
Uh, no, go ahead and make your motion and I'll make my comments and maybe second your motion.
I'll go with motion, uh, one, two, three.
Okay, we have a motion on the table and, um, you know, I gotta echo some of the comments that Councilman Beltran stated, you know, the, the major concern that really the only concern is the location next to, uh, the adult school. And I personally got to go and meet the director of the adult school and do a tour of the school and it, it is next door. Well, it's, there's a building, but I think that he owns that building and then it's, it's another one. And so it's, it's well within that six hundred feet, I guess you could say, but talking with the director, her major concerns was one, the traffic on Olive. The speed limits and then also the U-turns that people are making there. And she asked for some no turn, U-turn signs there on Olive in front of the adult school because there's been multiple wrecks from people doing U-turns and pulling out into uncoming traffic, which creates a hazard for everyone in the area. And then another concern was the transit stop and, and transit services for the adult school, uh, adults, I wanted to call them the children for a second, but they are adults. And then, uh, the homeless. Those were the three concerns that came up, never did it come up about the cannabis dispensary and the, the location of it. Um, so with that, uh, I, I do hear your concerns, Councilman Beltran, and, and just echoing you again, I hate seeing three cannabis dispensaries on a main street. And so I, I do like, uh, spreading the wealth of that shame, I think you could say. Um, with that, uh, we have a motion on table, I will second that motion, if there's no other comments, we'll call for the vote. Passes four one.
Would you like me to read by title only?
Yes ma'am.
An ordinance of the city council, the City of Porterville approving a development agreement between the City of Porterville and Cannabis Express Inc. relating to the development of a retail cannabis dispensary at one four three two West Olive, Unit A. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. Okay, with that, we'll move on to our final public hearing of the night, maybe the best one, uh, Mr. Tree.
Moving right along Mayor, members of the council, the final, uh, public hearing is the adoption of an ordinance adding Article fifteen to Chapter two of the Porterville Municipal Code, establishing principles of individual liberty. On October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, the city council reviewed a draft framework for an ordinance establishing the city's commitment to the principles of individual liberty and provide direction to staff to return with a final version. In response, the city attorney has prepared the attached draft ordinance, adding Article fifteen, uh, to Chapter two of the Porterville Municipal Code titled Commitment to Individual Liberty. The ordinance has been fully numbered and formatted for codification. The ordinance affirms the city council's position on matters including medical freedom, parental rights, non-discrimination and women's safe spaces and includes support findings, it also includes provisions allowing the city council at its discretion to consider the future development of a legal defense assistance program. Any such program would require separate review, definition and funding approval by the city council before it can be implemented. It is staff's recommendation that the city council conduct a public hearing to receive public testimony regarding the proposed ordinance, introduce and waive the first reading of said ordinance and add a Article fifteen to Chapter two of the Porterville Municipal Code titled Commitment to Individual Liberty and direct, direct staff to place ordinance on a future agenda for second reading and adoption. That's the conclusion to staff's report and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you City Manager.
Can I just add one comment, just so that, just to make sure that it's on the record? In, on section two dash one sixty sub E, section E, we just note for the record that the HIPAA is still wrong in the one that was published, but we, has been noted by the city clerk and will be changed for the, if it's passed for the first reading, thank you.
That's just spelling, right?
Thank you ma'am. Okay, um, with that, we will open the public hearing at eight ten. If you have any comments, please come forward, and then I'd, I'd also just like to add for the record, uh, Mr. Coffey had comments on this in opposition of this ordinance in oral communication.
I would like clarification, exactly what do you mean? Individual liberty, including?
Ma'am, can you state your name for the record, please?
Jean Valthiatis. Including medical freedoms, parental rights, non-discrimination protections, non-discrimination. Some of the things that have been said here about LGBTQ people, come on. And related provisions, this sounds more like pet projects. This is not clear at all what you're really going to do with this, how you're going to interpret things. This is very confusing and I would like you to not go into this area. I don't think you have any legal rights to go into these areas. You're a Porterville consul, not California consul, not constitutional, we have those. This is already covered in those laws, stay out of this area. It's none of your business, your business is with Porterville and our needs directly. Thank you.
Thank you Jean.
Brock Neely address on record and Fernando's got some literature for you. Uh, first of all, I'd like to point out your hypocrisy when you discuss in section B under findings, talking about depriving any person of life, liberty or property without due process of, of, of law in the Fourteenth Amendment. Nowhere in the Fourteenth Amendment does it state that you have to be an, an adult to attain this right. So your parental rights thing is nullified by conflict. The other thing is on your parental rights, you cite the Fourteenth Amendment and several other court cases. Under, uh, current law, this broad parental right under the Fourteenth Amendment is not without limits. Not long after the mayor Pierce Wright was established, the court decided in Pierce v. Massachusetts that the family itself is not beyond regulation and in, in the public interest. Reeling in the right of establishing a boundary that allows courts to regulate the treatment of children when it is in the best interest, based on that boundary, courts have further clarified that although parents may opt to send their children to public school, the parental rights do not extend beyond the threshold of the school door. That's, it was a finding in Fields v. Palmdale School District from two thousand five. More specifically, parents do not have a due process right to interfere with the curriculum, discipline, hours of instruction or nature of other curricular or extracurricular activities. And this falls under parental, Parents for Equalization of Ethic Materials and Torkelson. This limit also applies to parents who wish to influence school policies and Parents v. Privacy v. Barr. A case which related to school policies for bathroom use by transgender students. The court held that parents have the right to restrict their children from public schools, but do not have the right to dictate school policy. Therefore, that section is null and void by statute and by case law. You have no authority over schools other than zoning in non-instructional spaces, period, by law, by constitutional law. Therefore, if you pass this tonight, approximately Thursday, there will be papers filed in federal court filing suit against this city. Part of that settlement is like my husband described.
Thank you, Mr. Neely.
Hello, uh, Paul Flores, my address is fourteen seventy-six State Street in Porterville, California. Um, I just wanted to talk about, you know, when I think of the word liberty, I, you know, think of the Statue of Liberty, a French statue. And then, uh, the next thing I think about is Blessings of Liberty, uh, the group created here by Ed McCurvy and uh, I guess a member that was, or you guys were kind of a, from what I understand, you were groomed into it by Josh Flowers and Corey Wells. Um, the issue I have with this Blessings of Liberty, I mean, I consider you guys a full-on hate group and white supremacists. Full dead stock, you know, I don't need to act like it, you know, that's not what's happening here with flags or whatever else. But with the Blessings of Liberty, you guys have been around, you guys have been pushed the, uh, pushed some of these letters and stuff, kind of like Huntington Beach has tried. And in all of the years that you guys have existed, you guys only have seven members on Facebook. You know, I, I've been on social media and it's not that hard to find friends and groups and, uh, people that support your cause, and so my bigger question is if you guys want to establish this kind of legal stuff, you guys can't even establish a Facebook group, you can't even get more than seven members. What's that about? What kind of liberty is that, if, if you guys are such a real group, why have you not found more than seven members? I'm just curious, I don't think that anyone believes in any of this stuff that you guys are trying to pass. This is just kind of the, the Ninth and Tenth Amendment stuff that the Sons of Confederate Veterans have been pushing and this is about racism and controlling kids and controlling women, it has nothing to do with liberty. You guys are playing nineteen eighty-four, turning it around on its head, just like how this picture I have of you, McCurvy, doing this stance, this Baphomet stance during the veterans parade? And Blessings of Liberty, you know when it was, uh, founded? On six, six, two, zero, two, two, which is six. You guys are Satanists. You guys are Satanists, you guys don't believe in liberty, this is a big joke and I caught you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Flores.
Good evening gentlemen. Ta Ha Salé again. That's a lot, that's a lot, that's a lot. Uh, I believe there's a lot of support for this, I, I don't think you guys would bring something if there wasn't support, there might not be in this room right now. But there is. And it's concerning. It really is, it's concerning. Because I, I read this and it didn't give me, this is, I believe all, I do that already. I have those rights already, ain't no school gonna tell me how I'm gonna raise my kid and do, I, I show up. And so if there's enough people in this community that don't believe they have those rights already, that means that, that you felt the need as a city council to bring that, that's concerning for me. And I think there's ways to do that without using city money and city resources, I don't know how much this costs for Ms. Lou to research this and make sure that we're staying within rights and not getting sued, I don't know that. But it's clearly divided some people back here, I know that when you divide people in the community, it's not always a, a great, um, way to move forward, you want to bring people together. So I, I guess this is a message to you, the city council, to your constituents that felt this was needed. Um, I think there's an opportunity to have a conversation, why do you feel like you don't have those rights, why do you feel like you're under attack? I have my own, uh, concerns with the schools and, and many other things. But there's a way to address that. I don't think the, the way to address that is at a city council meeting, well, there's not really any teeth, I don't, I don't, please explain to me what this, how this will improve my life and my children's life. I want to understand what the city, what, what teeth this will have that will do that. And maybe, maybe I'll, I, I don't see it, maybe you'll say it and I'll understand, but right now it just sounds like you doing something for the constituents that put you in your seats, you, you need to deliver. Basically, you got voted in, a lot of politicians get voted in, I've heard the words, I'm a politician, you gotta deliver now. And but the, the way you're delivering is dividing, so. And but the, the way you're delivering is dividing, so, um, yeah, I, I just, I, I hear what you guys are saying. I think there's a better way and, uh, Councilmember Green, I know this is a long meeting. If we just stuck to the basics, fix the roads, make sure everything's good, this will be a quick meeting, there would be a lot less public comment. But unfortunately, when we do things like this, it, it, it gets a lot of energy, it gets my energy up and we show up, so. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and thank you for, for actively listening.
Thank you, Mr., Mr. Saleh.
This is Luis Gonzalez. I believe to summarize what the public would like to state is that it is not in your jurisdiction for these, um, parental rights, all this other stuff you guys are trying to amend. It is not, it is not a city's, uh, it is not on the city's jurisdiction to dictate. When I was in high school, I did not have any educational ideology imposing me aside from whatever, uh, math, science, history. The, it, it's already, the school districts are already doing a good job educating the, the youth. I know. I just graduated a couple of months ago. I could tell how people in, in Porterville Unified School District are doing their best to educate the young. So I honestly am trying to figure out where did you guys take law, uh, did you guys ever go to law school? Was this ever, was this ever part of, uh, you guys' curriculum to, to be like, "We can trample over rights that citizens have by default in our constitution, no matter how much our current administration wants to delete that from the Library of Congress. That is our right and our right only."
Thank you, Luis.
Greg Shelton, eighth and fourth drive. You know, I don't have much of an opinion about this, you know, but what I'm hearing tonight is threats to lawsuits and secret societies and hidden meanings for, uh, for, uh, you know, flags and, and even numerology. So I, I don't know really what, what this is about, but I gotta bet it's, it's one of the most entertaining items I've ever seen. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Greg Shelton. Is there anyone else? I'm not seeing anyone. We'll close the public hearing at nine twenty-two.
Yeah, the, the public hearing's closed. We're-
Order in the chambers. The public hearing is closed. There is plenty of opportunity to come forward. With that, bringing it back to the council. Councilman Beltran, do you have any comments?
I remember early on in, um, when I was elected, I think within the first year or something, we did something similar to this as a proclamation. And a lot of it had to do with understanding what somebody, I think, Mr. Saleh had spoke to, you know, we, reminding ourselves that we do have freedoms and we do have rights and, and, but it's up to exercise those. The last most important part, um, and, but coming forward to, there's been some discussion, uh, I think this is the second time this has come to us. There's just a lot of concerns I have. The, the part I like about this stuff is throughout the, the statements, um, it refers back to the, either federal or state constitution or, uh, laws that are already on the books. And so a lot of what this came from was COVID and, I mean, there's other stuff attached to, but feeling like government overstepped its boundaries. But what's interesting to me is, is in here, is, um, on the medical freedoms one, on section E, it states that the city of Porterville shall not follow or enforce executive or administrative directives that have been determined to, deter, determined to unlawfully infringe upon constitutional protected rights. Now, I don't know if that means that we need to wait for a legal analysis of it or if it's just a personal determination, because it says, it doesn't really define that, because kind of like COVID, what ended up happening is, there's a lot of, myself believed that a lot of things were over, overhanded. And so I, I agreed with that. However, we found out later on that it was all legal, you know? And so this, and then the second sentence of that one said, um, "Said determination shall be made by the city council with the advice of city attorney or appointed legal counsel." And that's kind of what happened during COVID, you know, they got legal advice, even though we disagreed with them, they ultimately had the authority to do what they did. And so some of this was like pushed back on that authority, but yet then it's doubling down on that authority. So this whole thing kind of contradicts itself in a way. I get what we're trying to do, like I said, I signed another proclamation, I understand that part. But we have, we can't do anything in the school district, so that's kind of a moot point. The safe spaces, I, I made comments about that. I had some concerns with, with that as well. However, we don't have a facility if there's an issue. We don't have a doctor, we don't have, it doesn't, it doesn't state in here, is it police department, is it the administrative department that's supposed to try to enforce any of this stuff? So it's kind of very, it's more of a political statement than it is actual ordinance is, because there's no teeth in this. It doesn't say somebody can be arrested, somebody can be fined. There's just nothing in here that gives it actually any real weight. It's more of a statement. And I'm not disagreeing with some of these beliefs, but legally, we really don't have any space for this. This is, again, we always fall back to the state rules and then the backdrop of that is the federal law. And I think anything, any people that might have a concern here can just fall back on one of those for any kind of lawsuits. And the last part of this has to do with a legal fund. I can't imagine how many people are gonna line up for these lawsuits that are gonna, I mean, I know we're not funding it now, but it's just the, even the idea that taxpayer dollars can go to something like this, that it's a whole, it's a personal liberty, it's a personal thing, not a, not as a city. And so I don't like us trampling into this space. If we wanna do any changes, it's not here at the City of Porterville City Council, it's as, run in as assembly person in the legislature from the state to change the state laws. As far as I'm concerned, none of this, all we are saying is we will fall back on state or federal laws. I, I don't see anything here that's specific to Porterville that we are actually implementing. It's a belief, but again, I don't wanna ask the police officers to go out and make these arrests. It doesn't say that there actually is arrestable in here. Doesn't show a fine, doesn't show anything, any due process. So to me, if we wanna keep working on this, keep working on it, but I, I think it's, we're just kind of wasting, again, to another point is staff's time and city resources on personal beliefs. I have these beliefs, but how, I'm not gonna waste any more time of, I would love to be home by now. So with that, I know there'll be more statements on it, but that's what I have to say on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Beltran. Councilman Rivas?
Um, I echo a lot of what, uh, Mr. Beltran said on that issue, and I read your little brief, Mr. Neely. And, um, what I don't wanna do is I don't wanna put the city in any, any nullified lawsuits. I, I really don't. And I think we're, in my opinion, a bit overstretched as to what we can control in the schools. I don't think we have any business in there. It doesn't change my faith or my belief in things, but there are laws already in place on the federal level and state level. And I am not gonna jeopardize and waste taxpayer man, money on any frivolous lawsuits, or not frivolous, uh, strong lawsuits that might encompass and put us in a bigger hole. So, um, other than that, I mean, if we wanna talk about this more and, and get some legal foundation from the Supreme Court or, or just something, something where, like the, 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 Mr. Beltran said, some bite where the officers can enforce this, um, maybe. But until then, I, I see some flaws that, um, it looks good, but I'm not gonna entertain a political, um, um, on this issue. I don't want, the bottom line is, I don't wanna conflict with any state or federal law. And I don't want to put the state, uh, the city in any, any litigation. So, um, I think if there's a different approach, we can, we, we could go, but until then, um, I'm just going to, um, reevaluate this and, and see if we can look at it at a different perspective and, and go, move forward, but, uh, I don't want to infringe on anybody's discriminatory rights. So with that, I turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Rivas. Councilman Green?
I don't think I could add any more than what Mr. Rivas has just, just said, so there's no point in me bloviating. I, 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 I tend to stand at least in quite, quite a bit in, in, um, well, agreement with Mr., Mr. Councilman Rivas at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Green. Vice Mayor McCurvy?
It's, it's really a neat one. I like this one. You know, Councilman Beltran and Rivas and Green's point, it's not meant to be us to be the police out there. This is meant to make a statement about Porterville, that we stand on individual liberty, just like our oaths. And it's also something that you have to look back. I mean, even when Raymond was sitting in my living room, when we were helping him run for office and I helped him get elected, he felt very strongly about this. And you know, the thing about the black letter law book is there's a word in there about, it's called a mandate. And what happened to us in COVID with the mandate is very important. And this is something that makes us, that takes us, uh, a step towards not making a mistake and following an unlawful mandate. And remember, a mandate in the law, if you follow it, it becomes law. If you don't follow it, it doesn't become law. And so when an executive comes down and makes an order to say, "You have mandated," and then we mandate people in our city to wear a mask or get a shot, that has the power and authority of an executive, but it isn't real because you still have your individual liberty. And we overstepped our bounds, not only in this city, but in cities all across our nation. This is about not going against the individual liberty and making that statement that this city will stand on that and not abuse its citizens with unlawful mandates. And it's important that we stick to that principle. It's also important to remember that these executive orders and things that were happening, they said, "Get the shot or you lose your job." And then later they said, "Well, you had a choice." And we abused a lot of people with government, not this body, but governments, bodies like this did. And so the individual liberty is really just what the Constitution says and what we take an oath to, and that's all this is. And it's for everyone. Every resident, every citizen, every creed, every color, it's about the individual. And that means every single person. And I hear tonight, you're, you're against these, this group to that groups, that's not what this is. This is for everyone. And it's written that way. And I just wanna make that plain because there's no risk of litigation. I know I hear threats from the, from the audience, but we hear those threats all the time. We heard all kinds of conspiracies in here tonight. That's not gonna change the way that we, we lead our city. We still have to lead with principle. And the principle of individual liberty is at the center of this, and we all swear an oath to it. That's what this is about. And if we get into a situation where something happens like that and someone is injured personally as an individual, we wanna make sure there's a mechanism to make sure that that doesn't lead to something worse, like we went through. That's what this is about. I wanted to say that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And, and you know, the, the legal foundation here is not to use the teeth of the city as far as our law enforcement to enforce the laws, to, to go into restrooms or protect parental rights with, with law enforcement. It is the constituent that is harmed who we would represent. So where did we pick up this foundation? It's cities like LA and San Francisco. Yes, they have more money than us, I agree with that, but through lawfare, that's the only way government works or will be moved off of a position that is extreme. Allowing biological men or men into women's spaces is extreme. Violating parental rights, hiding information from parents on what their gender ideology is or, or whatever that is going on, a parent should be involved. That is the most important person, excuse me, sir, please have order in the chambers while we speak. We were polite while you spoke. There's, there's a real sick thing that's going on in the state of California and, and countrywide. And then also going to medical freedom. People lost their jobs, their livelihoods. Through lawfare, we could protect the constituents of Porterville, and that's what we're presenting. To get to a legal fund, we first have to set this tonight. And you know, may get voted down, that's fine, but I'm gonna read this document into the record. And so it's an ordinance of the city council of the city of Porterville, adding Article fifteen to chapter two of the Porterville Municipal Code, setting forth its commitment to the principles of individual liberty, including medical freedom, parental rights, and protection of women's safe spaces. Findings: The city council of the city of Porterville believes the principles of individual liberty and the bodily integrity and fundamental to a free and just society, and furthermore are protected by federal constitution and the constitution of the state of California. The Fourteenth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution sets forth that no state shall deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process. Title IX of the Education Amendment of nineteen seventy-two prohibits discrimination based on sex in education programs and activities that receive federal funding. The city council recognizes, to the fullest extent permitted by applicable law, the fundamental rights of individuals to make informed medical decisions, including the right to choose or refuse medical treatments and interventions. The city council recognizes that the United States and this, and the state of California have enacted laws aimed to safeguard medical liberties in preventing discrimination and personal health choices, as exemplified by the Federal Health Insurance, Portability, and Accountability Act and the California Confidential of Medical Information Act. The United States Supreme Court has repeatedly recognized parents' constitutional right to make decisions concerning the care, custody, and control of their children. This includes the right to direct their children's upbringing and education. The city council believes that, to the fullest extent permitted by law, the residents of the city of Porterville should be entitled to make their own medical and/or parental choices free from coercion, discrimination, or undue interference. The COVID-nineteen pandemic and other public health emergencies have raised important questions about the balance between public health orders and individual rights. The city of Porterville is a charter city directly authorized by the California Constitution and formed by the authority of its people to govern its municipal affairs, and as such has directed interest in protecting the individual liberties of its citizens. As a charter city, it is the responsibility of the city of Porterville to respect and protect the constitutionally protected rights and freedoms of its residents in accord with the law. Medical freedom: The city council affirms its commitment to protect an individual liberty and medical freedom. Every adult resident of Porterville has a right to make their own informed medical decisions, including the right to consent to or decline medical treatment and interventions free from coercion, discrimination, or illegal interference. The city of Porterville will not engage in illegal discrimination against individuals based on their vaccination or medical status, and will respect the privacy of individuals' medical information to the extent protected by law. The city of Porterville recognizes the importance of legally established public health measures to promote public health and to protect the community during public health emergencies. The city of Porterville shall not follow or enforce executive or administrative directives that have been determined to unlawfully infringe upon constitutionally protected rights. Said determination shall be made by the city council with the advice of city attorney-appointed legal counsel. The city of Porterville encourages open and respectful dialogue on liberty issues affecting the city and the protection of the public health of the Porterville community, fostering understanding and cooperation among its residents through constitutionally protected free speech, open dialogue, without illegal censorship. The city of Porterville will continue to monitor and adapt its policies and practices to protect the rights and freedom of its residents while also addressing public health concerns as required by law. Parental rights: The city council affirms its commitment that city residents, to the fullest extent required by the federal and state constitution, are entitled to be made aware- aware of information and matters related to the minor child's health and education, including all physical and mental health matters, educational curriculum, or sexual and or general orientation, identity, or expression. Protection from Discrimination: Women's Safe Spaces: The City Council affirms its commitment that the city residents, to the fullest extent provided by for by the state and federal constitution, are entitled to legal protection against discrimination, including discrimination based on sex. And women are entitled to equal education opportunities in safe, private environments in order to minimize the risk of sexual harassment and violence. Legal Challenges: Based on the findings set forth in Section 2160 above, the City has directed interest in protecting its residents, including parents and children. Due to the impact of state legislation that illegally infringe on the individual liberties of its community members, the City Council hereby authorizes the establishment of a legal defense assistance program and fund, with said fund to be established at such time that funding is expressly determined by City Council to be available and set forth in the city's budget for such purpose. The scope and requirements of the program shall be set forth by resolution of the City Council. And so I I read that because it it really is common sense. It's constitutionally protected. And and our state has created laws that violate federal law. And eventually, we have to take a stand as as Americans here in the state of California and say, no more. And so, yes, legislation makes laws that infringe upon our rights. But if we sue them and you create a new precedent, that's the way you fight today in today's world, is through lawfare. And we're seeing that at the highest levels. And it's really, you have to take a lead. You have to lead in these arenas. And this is what inspires other cities to fight back against evil. It takes leadership. And so that's that's why I I push so hard and work so hard on this. City Attorney, I appreciate all the the hard work and making sure that we're protected legally, and that it is the constituent who has been harmed that we would be supporting. And it would be a decision by this council that is set by resolution, which has not been set yet. And so I I understand your guys' concerns tonight. But we we really have an opportunity to lead in the state of California right now.
Can I make another comment?
Yes, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Please, order in the chambers.
Are we saying that the state and federal get to make whatever rules they want, and this council doesn't matter? Is that what I'm hearing from the public?
No. Do not ask the questions.
No, I'm just saying, it's rhetorical. There's no answer needed. But what I'm saying is, there's no reason to have a local body that makes laws if we're just going to follow all the other laws. There's a reason this is a local body, and there's a reason it's a charter city so that we can make our own ordinance. And this is precisely why. We spent, and we abused not only the the treasury of this city, but we abused our own constituents. We spent $2 million on vaccine incentives.
That is your final warning.
Money, we're talking about the risk of money. We spent $2 million. And we're crying about crumbs. We did that while we bankrupted churches and small businesses. We can't do that as a city. We should never do that as a city. This is to set the tone to say that this city stands by the individual, and when things like that happen, we would make a better decision in the future. That's what this says. And I'm glad you read it into the record, Mr. Mayor, because it's really important for people to hear it that aren't here tonight.
Absolutely.
Because there's a lot of people in this city that want this, a lot more than are sitting in this in this chamber.
Yes. And and as lesser magistrates, you know, we have higher magistrates that may rule upon us and and set tyranny. But as a lesser magistrate, I refuse to follow that. And and that's why I've took in this position. And Mr. Saleeb made a great comment tonight. I campaigned on this. I door knocked. I talked to individuals and and I won as a no-name guy. I won big. And I talked to people in our community because of concern. There are community members whose whose children, the first time they were I I'm not even going to say it on record. It's just, there there's a time and place and and it's time to start fighting back. We have to protect our children. We 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 have to protect women in our community. And and we need to protect medical freedom. It's important. We we are sovereign in in that way. So with that, I will make a motion. Is there any other comments? I know we've talked a lot. Comes from Beltran. Green?
I'll just make a quick statement. To your point, initially, I was mandated by my employer to get the vaccination, and I exercised my personal freedom and did not. Same thing with my kids in school. I look at their what they're going to be taught, the lessons and stuff. And and I opt out of stuff that I don't agree with. So I I think it just comes back to individuals exercising those individual freedoms. And, you know, you're reading it to the record, maybe we'll, you know, inform individuals that they, again, these are all protected rights already. So they just need to exercise them.
Thank you, Councilman Beltran. Is there any other comments, Councilman Rivas?
I mean, thank you for reading that in the in the in the record. But I just want to, I mean, my biggest concern is the lawsuits. And I mean, can you with certainty stipulate that are we on legal legal bounds, legal?
I can't stipulate with certainty that we won't get sued, because law, people can sue on it. I I do believe that over and over again in this ordinance, it says, to the extent protected by law, to the extent protected by the state and federal constitution, it has the legal limitations built into the language itself. So on that basis, I don't think there's much grounds for a facial challenge. That does not end the discussion, though, because it will come down to how ultimately this is implemented. And so I and I can't speak to that because I don't know what that looks like yet. We had that though, that part of it hasn't been written.
So if we we vote on this, what is the next, if it passes?
If it passes, it would go into, you know, it goes through first and second reading, and then another 30 days before it becomes effective. And then in the meantime, the council decides when and if it wishes to go ahead and begin looking at how to, you know, formulate the resolution to implement the program. What does the program look like? What is the, you know, what are the, what will be the criteria for potentially providing assistance, you know, legal assistance to individuals? And, you know, and my recommendations are always going to be that it needs to be tied to a city, you know, that it needs to be tied to a city resident, it needs to be tied to a city issue, it needs to be tied to an issue that we believe we have stand, you know, that we have the ability to provide that funding without it becoming a problem for the city. But it can be tricky. All of those decisions, it'll be very case by case. And and it can potentially, so I can't guarantee. I'll never be able to guarantee that there couldn't be legal actions on that.
And I I appreciate that, Julian. And part of the resolution to in the future that I would support if we do go down this road, is that it would need to be like a at least a majority, a super majority, right, four, four one vote at a minimum, maybe we make it a five-person vote to support whatever that person brings before the council. And then I also think that some of that stuff needs to be in closed session until we're ready to bring it out. And and so that would be part of the resolution if we make it pass this point. As far as being sued on this, there there's no way we're going to sue because we're not causing harm.
I don't see an effective, what we would call a facial challenge to the ordinance, just because it is just frankly stating laws. And then it does, I mean, it does talk a little bit what the council believes. It talks to that extent. But again, it's not implementing, because there are no teeth, it is making it hard for it to actually have any kind of legal damage or consequence.
Exactly. If we were saying, we're going to use the police department to enforce these regulations, now we are violating state law that has been passed by legislature, and we would potentially get sued. But we are not in those bounds.
Right. I guess it may be clear here. I I'm an officer of the court and the law as a public, as a public official and a city attorney. So I can never advocate for civil disobedience as much as, that doesn't mean that individuals can't, but that I, it's not, I'm not my place to do that. So that's not what the, all I can do is try to provide you a legal means for providing challenges to think to to issues or areas where the council believes that the city's individuals' rights have been infringed upon. And yes, there will be, and that's a simple way of saying it, but there are, there will be complexities because we know standing is a big issue. It was brought up a little bit tangentially and with regard to some of the comments during the public hearing. But that can be his moving target. There are cases all the time challenging even the ability for cities to bring constitutional challenges. So I mean, it's, and and that can change, right? And so that's why it's, I can't give you definitive answers. But thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rivas, do you have any other comments?
Not at this time. I'm still debating.
Okay. If there's no other comments, I'm going to make a motion. And my motion is to go forward with this ordinance as written. I I would also take your correction on the spelling. With that, that is my motion.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
So we have a first and a second. Are there any other comments? We'll call for the vote. Mine, mine did not pop up Fernando to be able to vote.
Hold on. I I just have one more question before I make a decision. So we are not in direct conflict with state and federal law, are we?
No, not not by virtue of just adopting this ordinance, no.
Okay. So this ordinance is just a, just a prima facie of what what things to come?
Right. It's real, the whole, the purpose of it is to create a legal defense fund. There are provision, you know, implementing it, I can't speak to, but the actual authorize, you know, authorizing and approving the ordinance does not, in my mind, create a, basically a liability for the city.
Please order in the chambers.
I can't take that risk.
L's two, three. Okay, with that, we'll move on. We'll move on to our second reading or our first, second reading, Agenda Item Number 11.
Mayor, for these, Rich, did you want to do it? Or I'm going to go ahead. So for these, we would ask that they're all the building code, the ordinances that you considered at the last meeting.
Yes.
And if the council is in agreement with providing second reading on all of them, you can, you can do that in one motion, wait for the reading thereof, and then I will read all of those for you. So you can do it in one action if you'd like.
Okay, let's do that. So I'll make a motion to go forward with the second readings of 11 through 15. I'm looking for a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. We'll call, call for the vote. Passes five, zero. Okay, moving on to
I'll, I'll read by title only, if you bear with me, if you don't mind. Thank you. On item number 11, that's ordinance number 1921, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Porterville amending Article 1 of Chapter 7 of the Municipal Code of the City of Porterville and adopting by reference the 2025 additions of the California Administrative Code, the California Building Code along with designated appendices, the California Residential Code along with the designated appendices, the California Energy Code, the California Historical Building Code, the California Existing Building Code, the California Reference Standards Code, and the Wildland Urban Interface Code as published by the International Code Council. On item number 12, that's ordinance number 1922, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Porterville amending Section 7-4 of the Municipal Code of the City of Porterville, adopting by reference the 2025 edition of the California Mechanical Code published by the International Association of Plumbing and Mechanical Officials. On number 13, that's ordinance number 1923, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Porterville amending Section 7-6 of the Municipal Code of the City of Porterville, adopting by reference the 2025 edition of the California Plumbing Code published by the International Association of Plumbing and Mechanical Officials. On item number 14, that's ordinance number 1924, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Porterville amending Section 7-9 and deleting 7-10 of the Municipal Code of the City of Porterville, and adopting by reference the 2025 edition of the California Electrical Code published by the BNI Publications, Inc. An ordinance number 1925, that's on number 15, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Porterville amending Article 4 of Chapter 7 of the Municipal Code of the City of Porterville, adopting by reference the 2025 edition of the California Green Building Standards Code published by the International Code Council. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. Okay, with that, moving on to Schedule Matter Number 16, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Before we get into this item, I just wanted to check to see if you wanted to take a break. We normally take a break at 8:15, but we can proceed if that's the desire.
How does council want to go forward? Do you guys need a recess? Let's get it done.
Okay. Very good. The first scheduled matters item is authorization to purchase a veterans' park playground. And I've asked Deputy City Manager Tony Moore to provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Tree. Honorable Mayor, members of the council. City Council expressed a desire to have a children's playground constructed in Veterans Park. The new playground will be constructed in conjunction with the upcoming celebration of the city's 100-year anniversary as a charter city and America's 250-year anniversary. The playground will feature a battleship designed to complement the setting and theme of Veterans Park. On October 21, 2025, the City Council reviewed one battleship playground design and directed staff to bring back additional options. Some of the proposed playground features include a climbing wall, which is listed as an improvement in the park's master plan for Veterans Park, multiple slides, various levels, decorative battleship elements, and more. The total cost will include excavation, concrete border, wood fiber servicing, engineered stamp drawings, and installation based on prevailing wage. A separate request for qualifications will be issued for the ADA connectivity portion of the project, which is beyond the scope of playground equipment vendors. Four vendors previously used by the city for park projects were contacted to provide conceptual designs. All four vendors participate in a government purchasing cooperative that provides discounted pricing and streamlined procurement for public agencies. Two quotes received to date were $359,792.40 and $249,177.74. The other vendors are still working on their quotes at the time of the agenda publication, and none have been received since then to date. The allocated budget for this playground in fiscal year 2025-26 is $600,000 through Measure I funds. Staff is confident the total playground cost will not exceed $400,000, which includes an estimated additional up to $15,000 for an ADA connectivity path. Staff's recommendations at the City Council provide direction on the purchase of a playground for Veterans Park. Authorize a deputy city manager to negotiate a contract and execute all necessary documents for the playground purchase, including excavation, concrete border, installation, and engineered wood fiber, and a 10% contingency not to exceed $385,000 through budgeted Measure I funds, and authorize the distribution of a request for qualifications for the ADA connectivity path portion of the project with a cost not to exceed $15,000. That concludes staff's report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Okay, bringing it back to council, council, excuse me, City Council, Councilman Rivas, do you have any comments?
You know, I like the idea, and what I, what I like about it is generational. And I mean, is, I have a few questions. Is this for, on the CIP, the Capital Improvement Program?
Yes, it is.
Isn't it? Is it, can we, are we looking for any type of other funding to mitigate the the cost or anything to that nature?
At this time, this project is fully funded by Measure I funds.
Measure I funds, okay. No, I, like I said, I like the project. I I think that it's, it'll be good for the community for generations to come. I think we need something to to to, you know, look, look at and and have the kids play on on the playground. And and, you know, I think there, there needs to be more stuff that like this to come towards Porterville. And I really think that once we, it gets built, that I think families will enjoy it and will have a good time. And I mean, we need, we need more stuff like this here in town, in in Porterville. And I support this. So with that, if I have any more questions, I'll, I'll, I'll come back to the, the mic.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman Rivas. Vice Mayor McCurvy?
As I understand it, we're gonna pick one that's for the older kids, five to 12 years old. I think it fits the park really well. And I echo the sentiments of Councilman Rivas. I think it's an important step forward. When we went through the CIP plan back in July, we kept the money in for this type of thing. So I'm all for it. I say we go forward.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor McCurvy. Councilman Beltran. Excuse me, Vice Mayor McCurvy, did I call you Councilman? Vice Mayor McCurvy. Councilman Beltran.
Brief question. Because we're doing this through the city council or city funds, it triggers prevailing wage. If this was a private entity or nonprofit, what have you, would it still trigger prevailing wage because it's on city property?
Yes.
It still would? Okay. My second comment to it, I said it in the first time this came up, is just given other things that are going on in the community, I get why there's kind of a rush for this for next year's recognition of the 100-year and 250-year. So I'm not against this type of theme or even at the park. It was just the way it's funded. Given that we're using Measure I funds for this, and it was stated earlier in the meeting that, from the vice mayor, that, you know, a lot of Measure I money basically went to the community center that couldn't go to the library. But this is just another example of money that could be utilized for our library. And if there wasn't, if there wasn't a time constraint, I would still reiterate the, looking at collaborating with a nonprofit organization. The Exchange Club has done some great programs. The Rotary has done some great programs. Even businesses, like I stated, Bank of Sierra, Walmart have built playgrounds in our community. So I like the theme. They're beautiful. I think they can get a lot of use out of them. But just, again, given that, I know we're gonna discuss the library in a future meeting, but I don't feel that this was the right allocation, at least at this time, until we figure out the library situation. If this is coming right off the top of Measure I, library fits also in that, in that aspect of money. And to go back and talk about the CIP again, this was recognized in the CIP as, I think, $600,000 towards it. It was a long meeting. Like the vice mayor said, we went line by line. I didn't catch this one because I think parks was towards the end of the meeting. It was like, we just pushed through. So I didn't catch this one, or I probably would have made the recommendation that, because I don't believe in the CIP. Did we allocate any funding for the library, for the facility? I don't think there's $1 we allocated under Measure I, under CIP, for the library. And so to me, this is just not a good look to go, this is a priority, and we're gonna fund this one. But the library, it's basically gonna come from insurance money and the grant that we got from the state. That, again, thinking forward and utilizing all the dollars that we could, I think this one could hold off. I love that we're getting, like, some, you know, I think it's these 30 homes, Summit Homes is more, the new impact fees, those new homes, again, are generic funds for parks. So I can see this coming, just not right now. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Councilman Beltran. Councilman Green, do you have any comments?
Well, I have commented in previous meetings. I think I've said all I need to say on the issue, so I really don't have anything further to add to it at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Green. And I would just state that the $600,000, or really it was $800,000, is the playground, a splash park, and then the monument that we're looking at doing at Veterans Park in honor of our great tradition here in America and in the city of Porterville with the 100 and 250. So with that, we have the funds. This project is funded. It's something that will be good for the city of Porterville. I really like this first look, and you have it up on the screen here. The cost is just under $250,000. This is for five-year-olds to 12-year-olds. It's a battleship-themed playground that'll fit at Veterans Park. We have the space. We have the parking. It'll be a good thing. Plus, when we add the splash park to this area, it's gonna be really nice. It's right where the oaks are sitting. It will have natural shade. This will be a good addition for our community. Something that people were asking for as I campaigned is more for our children to do in the community. And this opens that kind of doors with our community center and with our future library. With that, my motion would be for this project that we're, I mean, this playground that we're looking at on our screens here in front of us. I would just like two amendments to my motion right now, and that's going forward with this playground, the PlayCraft, PlayCore Battleship Theme Playground. Is, one, I'd like to see an American flag added to it. It could be plastic, but something that is part of the structure. And then, two, we name it the USS Porterville. So that's my motion.
If I may, I want to clarify that there was funding for the, from a California State grant for the library for close to almost $800,000. So there was money that did go to the library. And it's right here in the capital improvement.
Thank you.
Just wanted to clarify that, that money did go in there, almost $800,000.
Thank you, Councilman Rivas.
It was still funded.
Yeah. Thank you. And we will find ways to get more funding towards the library, but we're not going to stop fixing roads and stop improving our public infrastructure just for the library. That's not a good way of doing business or city business. So I have a motion on the table.
Well, you know, I just want to make that point, too, Mayor. We gotta balance the trade-offs. We gotta run our city. There's a lot of things the city does. It's a $200 million budget. Their library is maybe, we may be reconciling the funding here, but it's still three years out before that's complete. We have time to work on things. We don't want to stop paving roads and putting in things for our kids. So I totally understand. If you go back and you look at that CIP program, it's very interesting, and I encourage you guys all to look at it, because we already pulled back a ton. We pulled back probably $50 million in fantasy that was in that thing. And we've already, we've tightened the belt, and I think we've done a good job of that. We did a good job balancing the budget this year. This is something I think it's important. We need to do it. And we'll continue to find some creative ways to do the right thing. I don't want to wait on this. So I am going to second your motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Is there any other comments? Okay, let's call for the vote. Passes 3-2. Okay, moving on to Schedule Matter Number 17. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, this is the final Schedule Matters item for tonight. It is in regards to the City Hall American Flag Distribution Program, and I've asked Deputy City Manager Moore to provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Tree. Honorable Mayor and members of the council, at the October 21, 2025 City Council Meeting, Councilman Beltran requested that staff develop a program to periodically replace the American flag displayed in front of City Hall. The intent of the program is to maintain a dignified display of the flag while creating opportunities to present retired flags during city-sponsored events that celebrate civic pride and community service. On November 4, 2025, the city council directed staff to further evaluate program logistics, including responsibilities for properly retiring flags. Under the proposed program, a new American flag will be raised each quarter beginning January 2026. Replacement will be performed by trained personnel. City staff will identify the month and year each retired flag was flown and store the flags for future ceremonial presentations. Flags that remain in good condition may be presented as keepsakes at community events or memorial recognitions. Flags that are no longer suitable for display will be respectfully retired in accordance with established flag protocol. The program can be managed by existing staff within the city manager's office. The estimated annual cost is $2,000 for the purchase of replacement flags and associated presentation materials. Funding will be provided through the community promotion budget, and no additional preparation is required. Staff's recommendations that city council authorize a program to raise a new American flag in front of City Hall each quarter beginning January 2026 with replacement handled by qualified personnel, direct staff to retire each prior flag from duty, label it with the month and year it is flown, and make it available for presentation during future city ceremonial events, and authorize the allocation of $2,000 annually from the community promotion budget for the purpose, for the purchase of replacement flags and related presentation materials. That concludes staff report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Councilman Beltran, you brought this forward. Go ahead and lead on it, sir.
I'll start off by saying I like the price tag on this for patriotism more than some of the other projects. So I'll start with that. The second part is, I know this is kind of a loose idea, and we're working on it, so thank you for the report. To tighten up the timeframe, I had concerns, and we talked about it in the meeting on Monday, of the period of time in which some of these flags will be out will be several months, because quarterly would be every three months. And given the wear and tear, the weathering of these flags, that if we shorten that window to these flags might be flown for just like a week, we'll have a period of time, sometime in when the weather's more acclimate, whether it's the springtime or fall, that we can pick a shorter period of time. I would love to at least do it, maybe six flags, because we have five honoraries for the Wall of Fame, and then one extra for other situations. So I would say a minimum of six. But if we shorten that up to like maybe a week-long period of time that they're flown, so that way they don't get too weathered, if that sounds like reasonable. And then I have a list of five, just off the top of my head, was the Post 20, Porterville Military Academy, veterans, or like a group like the Elks or Lions Group, Boy Scouts, and like the Honor Guard from the Fire Department. I'm sure there's some other entities that we can tie into, have a schedule for them to come out, raise it on a Monday, and maybe take it down on a Friday, some kind of a scenario. We'll work on that later. I'm sure staff can figure it out. But that's kind of more tightening up the amount and maybe the timeframe of when these will be up, and maybe who might be able to do the ceremony for them.
Thank you, Councilman Beltran. Councilman Rivas, do you have any comments?
Yeah. I like the gesture of this program, but for me, I just, I come from a family of military people where the flag is flown and honored, and flown and taken down in a respectful way in an environment where it's very dignified. I don't want to put any more burden on the city in regards to others coming in and doing that program. I mean, if we need to get flags for people that are dignitaries and so on and so forth, it could come to the council. We can come to the city manager, and we can process it that way. I just don't see the, I mean, it's a good gesture. I like it. I think that ceremony should be left at the military universities where they do that all the time, where it's dignified and respected and used in a proper manner. Not to say that I'm taking anything away from the people that, if the city does do it. But for me, it's very personal to me, and I just don't see how we're gonna continue that program for such a long time, because this is the fear that I have. If they come out and somebody passes by and they see somebody fooling around with the flag, or, I'm just saying that is as a, as a theory. But, you know, I would hate for somebody to complain to the city that they're not bringing down that flag in a very respectful and dignified manner. Because every time I see that flag, to me, is people that sacrificed their lives and went to war. And, you know, that includes law enforcement, fire staff, firefighters, and everybody who are first responders, especially the military. So with that, I appreciate the kind gesture, but I think it should be left at the military where they do it professionally, honorably, not at a city engagement or that matter. Because if we need to get a flag for somebody, I think we should bring it to the council, bring it to the city manager, and we can purchase a flag and dedicate it to the family or the individuals themselves. I don't think we need a program like this, because, in my opinion, it hits home for me, and it's too personal for me. So with that, I'll send it back to you.
Thank you, Councilman Rivas. And just for clarification, you're not, you're saying you don't want to see any of--
I don't support this.
Okay. Councilman Green?
Yeah. I kind of completely agree with Mr. Councilman Rivas. And if you're gonna fly a flag for a week, take it down, fly another for a week, take it down, and start handing out flags, kind of waters down the soup, doesn't it? You know, I mean, then we might as well just go buy a truckload and start going down Main Street throwing everybody a flag. That's how I feel about it. I do not support it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Green. Vice Mayor McCurvy?
No comments.
Okay, well, you know, I was in a position of, I thought we were kind of, we gave direction to staff to develop this. And I did like the gesture of, you know, doing something for, you know, former council members that passed away. We would fly the city flag at half-mask. And so when the gesture came up, when Councilman Beltran brought this up, I thought that would be a neat, neat thing to be able to give that family something like that. Interesting position we are in here. And so I was under the assumption we were going forward, and that's why we had staff write this out and develop a resolution. Okay, so with that, we have some comments. Does anybody else have any other comments? Looking for a motion? How do you guys want to go forward?
I'll make a comment in the motion. I have a son in the military, and I've had family members who have died in service. So, again, I mentioned Post 20. I guess you don't think that they're respectable enough to bow down the flag. The Porterville Military Academy, they do this daily at their school. But it's okay. You made your comment. It's my turn. It's my turn. And so it's just interesting. I think it's because I made the motion, or I brought this up. It's probably why it's not being supported, but it's okay. It's really interesting, if you want to respect the flag, but we put it on a bus. That's all dirty, and could get scratched and torn or worn. So it's just a very interesting mixed message I'm getting. So I like the event. It's not very expensive, especially if we do it lower. It's not, you know, a lot of places do this, but I thought we were patriotic, and we wanted to do this kind of thing. But I guess I'm in the Twilight Zone right now. So I would make the motion to support this and move forward with some of what I had said, and we can work with staff behind the scenes. But that'll be my motion.
Now, it's my turn to speak.
Councilman Rivas, go ahead, sir.
I do respect Post 20, and I do respect the military youngsters. But it has nothing to do, like you're assuming, because you made the motion. It has nothing to do with that.
Pick it up.
It has nothing to do with that. So with that, you know, even though I don't like the idea, I just don't like to put more burden on the city staff. That's all. Yeah, we fly the flags all over the place. But for me, I have family members that died in the military. So I take it very personally by you saying that. So I would appreciate, you keep your comments like that to yourself.
Order in the chambers. Let's not run off of victimhood here. Okay, Councilman Beltran, just for clarification on your motion, is it to leave it alone as this is written? Are you trying to amend this?
Well, with my recommendations, that it be at least six, and that the timeframe be shortened instead of quarterly. That could be maybe over a week period of time, maybe a couple of week period of time. So that way it is honorably flown and then replaced. Just those two little stipulations.
And does it say in here that we'd be handing these out to all honor-- And, and does it say in here that we'd be handing these out to all, uh, honor?
No, it doesn't say who. It, it just said, you know, we would, um...
Because I, I didn't read that either and that's what I was... I, I just wonder if you're, you're stacking a lot of flags.
No, that's why I said just six because, well, my recommendation initially was for the Wall of Fame inductees.
Yeah.
And then, you know, unfortunately we had the passing of past mayors, so that way a sixth one could be in reserve for if a situation happened that warranted a, maybe a flag given to something of that prestige, maybe not, you know, and maybe to your, to your point, maybe a five oh vote on that, that person would, uh, be allowed to receive that one. So it has to be a majority, not just, or, um, all five of us would agree that that person is worthy of it.
Uh, we have a motion on the table. Is there a second? You know, I will, I will second your motion.
I have a question. Who is going to be doing the, this, um, you said Post Twenty?
No.
Or you recommended?
That's his, his recommendations. I'm sure it's the Fire Department.
Have they been reached out?
No, because we haven't done this yet, but I think these are things that, especially for PMA and stuff like that, those are things that, uh, field trips or, or public service, these are things that we could tie in these organizations.
My understanding was that our Honor Guard with our Fire Department was going to...
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, I, I think there's some flexibility in that. Um, there was a discussion using our Fire Department's Honor Guard. Um, if they're not available, I think, uh, or they have other commitments, we would turn towards, you know, the cadets at, at the Porterville Military Academy, Boy Scouts, et cetera. I think there, I think it was left to, to allow staff some flexibility based on availability of, of those folks.
Well, taking that into consideration, I thought that I didn't want to put more burdensome on the Fire Department because at any given notice they're out and they got to go. And I just don't want to see the flag out there where it just, it's supposed to be down. So that was my concern. Now with that, um, I'll see where this goes and I, and I will accept it. So I'll, I'll second that motion with that. So with that...
Yeah.
Yeah, it, you know, it shouldn't be this controversial. One of the things that we're going to do when we do the walks on Main Street, which are going to be really cool, is we're going to try to get the, the honor of how they fold the flag and those things to really inculcate that and help people understand that, what you feel personally, that a lot of people don't even understand that. And so I, I like the idea. I did, the frequency was, was the thing that I was kind of hung up on, but, um, yeah, let's just get this done.
Yeah, let's go.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Uh, if there's no other discussion, we'll call for the vote. Passes four with one abstain. Four zero one. Okay. With that, we'll go into 1234 reports. Uh, downtown Porterville Committee meeting met November 20th. Vice Mayor McCurvy?
Yeah, we had another great meeting and we're not going to meet again till, uh, January. You guys can go check it out. We continue to do brainstorming on where we'd like our downtown to be. The focus continues to be on parking. We're going to probably have some meat on that in January and also cleanliness. We're really looking hard at the, uh, the alleyways and the trash because if we get people to come downtown, parking is going to be a premium. So we're going to be getting people used to parking behind places and walking. One of the things we talked about a lot is there's, there's a, a lot of business owners downtown that park in front of their own or in front of someone else's, uh, business. And so a lot of the cars on Main Street are people that work down here. So we, we had a nice spirited discussion about that, about we should be parking behind Main Street so we can give our patrons a front. So it's great discussion there. Um, there's a lot of, uh, uh, really good ideas on, uh, events, seasonal events where you don't do block parties and shut things down. And, uh, there's a, there's a flyer that we're developing, uh, to help us with this season here for, uh, um, Christmas season to get some people down here. Uh, it's in its infancy, I know. Uh, Rob Taylor was, uh, instrumental in getting us to, uh, gets a partnership with the school to get some singers to come down and sing, and they're going to do that on a few different days. And he's working with the several, uh, businesses downtown just impromptu, just to get in that spirit for Christmas. So, uh, really excited about the season in front of us with Christmas. Uh, we're going to do some collaboration with, uh, the Chamber and get some lessons learned out of the block parties because we had some, there's some, there's always conflict and there's always opportunity when we have those block parties. There's always, you know, things that we can do better. So we're going to be reconciling some of those with the Chamber and the Redo It Committee. And, uh, really excited to continue to make good steady progress there and, uh, I'm, I'm really, uh, excited about next year as we continue to develop that in conjunction with our 250th celebration and how good our downtown looks. The downtown looks awesome. The lights are all, um, ready to go. The lights are up for Christmas. The, everything's painted. It's, it's just wonderful to be down here and I'm just looking forward to the, the parade and the downtown committee's, you know, really excited about that too and want to continue to make that better.
Thank you, Vice Mayor McCurvy. Uh, Councilman Green, you have any other comments on it?
No, no, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, moving on to the Porterville Area Development Authority, uh, they met November 21st. Um, Councilman Rivas, do you have any comments?
Uh, no, other than, no, we're working with the, you know, the Indian tribe, uh, on some major progress, um, still to be determined. Um, so I really can't, don't want to really get into it with, um, what we, the aspects of it, but we have our next meeting on, I believe, the 16th, Mr. Beltran? Or the 19th? 19th. So with that, um, I, I see some good positive things happening, but first of all, we need to get the, the Fire Department, um, them build a fire station at their, their lot and, but with that, I don't want to get too much into it, but it, we're real close in fin, finalizing a lot of things there. So with that, I turn it over to Mr. Beltran if he has any more stuff to say.
Uh, we, so the PATA meeting was on, uh, November 21st. Uh, we actually, we're supposed to start at 3:00 PM, but we started at 3:30. It was a miscommunication on timing. Um, the, uh, we had six matters. I'll try to go through them quickly. The first was approval of minutes and it had been a, since November 20th, 2024 was the last time this committee had gotten together. So it'd been a year and so, uh, those minutes were approved. Uh, it was pretty standard stuff. Uh, the first couple of items was just reimbursement and I'm going to go through the, you know, tertiary treatment wastewater facility collection system and recycle wastewater infrastructure project. Stuff like that. So that was the first item and we, um, the reimbursement was eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-two cents. Uh, those were invoices 30 through 35, pass four zero. The next item was, uh, for the, uh, retention, uh, basin project, the storm drain. That was, uh, two thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-one cents, uh, for invoice number 13. That passed four zero. Um, there were some issues, some, some language because, uh, there were some invoices that were outstanding and talking about signing off on these projects. So item number four was tabled, uh, because there were items in number two and three that are going to come forward to the December 19th meeting, uh, just some housekeeping stuff. Uh, of local interest, we, uh, part of the item. Now, the PATA, so most people don't understand, is this the, the, um, uh, Port, Porterville Area Development Agreement. This is between the city and the tribe with the casino specifically. And so these are all projects that are tied out in that area. Um, so this, the number, item number five had to do with a local road improvement coordination. And this has to do with just the redevelopment of the streets out there. And so Director Sanchez, um, briefly spoke about the Caltrans 190 and Westwood Project, which many of you who travel in that area see that there's, um, uh, detour right now for that roundabout. It's going to take about 12 months for that project to be done, uh, so no time soon. There'll be different detours and different areas that they need to, uh, close down and, and reroute people. Um, and that goes to the second project is, uh, we want to, uh, do a realignment with West Street, which is in, directly in front of the casino and Scranton, which is the South County Jail side, kind of where the, uh, sports complex is. Uh, but unfortunately, just due to how long it's taking for the inventory ports, um, we were, we were hoping to piggyback with the 190 roundabout project. So when we close down those areas, it, it limits how much we're impacting, uh, people's uh, commutes, but unfortunately this is a little bit more delayed. And so that will be coming forth in about, um, maybe early spring. They'll go out to bid, uh, we're hoping around March. And so there'll be some road realignments that are happening out there. This will help with the, just the congestion when you're going out there. We know when we have the, um, uh, Freedom Fest or the casino has a concert, there's a lot of congestion in that area. And so those, item number five, the two road projects have to do with, with those. Um, so those are updates on that. Uh, number six has to do with the Chulie River Active Transportation Plan, and that has to do with more on tribal land. Um, they have three projects up there and they are the Village Corridor Crossing, the pedestrian bridge near their gym. They're going to be getting an extra crossing because you have to go pretty far to get across. And then also the replacement of their swinging, swinging bridge, which is a federal project is going to be funding that. Um, so those are all the main parts to, to the PATA and what we are discussing. Um, uh, Chairman Yeto just reiterated his commitment to working with the city and working together for both communities as the mayor spoke earlier, uh, at the beginning of the meeting of, you know, we both have our things that we're looking out for, for our constituents, but at the same time, how can we collaborate and, and come together, uh, so we can both prosper? And then the next meeting, as Councilman Rivas stated, was going to be December 19th at 3:00 PM. And these meetings are at the city, um, YouTube website, the city of Porterville. You can watch these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Beltran. Okay, with that, we'll move on to oral communication.
Let me repeat something I said tonight. Residents have witnessed rude behavior towards fellow council members by members sitting on that dais. And with that, let me say this. We have a petition that now has 515 signatures on it. It will stay up for a long time, asking council to prioritize general funding for the library. Five hundred and fifteen signatures is a lot of votes. Those numbers can determine outcomes of elections, can't they? So let me start with this. Many of us feel our opinions, as we've seen tonight, are being dismissed outright. When residents ask questions or disagree with your agenda, we are all too often ignored, mocked, or labeled as obstacles rather than constituents. We have a total of 12 minutes a month and you tried to cut that off tonight. To express our opinions and thoughts to you and to participate in representative democracy, we, we deserve your ear, your attention, not your scorn, your derision, and as well as answers to the questions being answered tonight, asked tonight. We also seek clarity about the public humiliation of city employees and repeated negative statements about former city managers. These patterns raise concerns about retaliation and the misuse of power. Why do council members feel it's appropriate to bully and harass and publicly humiliate dedicated city employees, the people who are getting the work done? And I am really surprised that they haven't filed a class action lawsuit against you guys for a hostile work environment. Related to the hard work and dedication of city employees, the adoption of the fiscal year 25, 26 budget appears to impose a hiring freeze due to fiscal constraints and a 30% reduction to departmental budgets. Yet the council continues to make irresponsible decisions such as building monuments and purchasing battleship play structures, using general fund dollars, giving oversized raises, establishing legal defense funds for potential lawsuits related to revenge politics like law, property kind of thing, or lawsuits implemented by other cities having no bearing on our needs. So similarly, let me see, similarly, many other council decisions appear to be rooted in extreme religious beliefs and residents want to understand why personal theology seems to be influencing public policy. Where is the line between personal faith and public duty? Finally, we deserve to know the truth about the hiring of the interim police chief. What process was followed? Who made the decision and why was the swearing in reportedly conducted in secrecy? Transparency in law enforcement leadership is not optional. These questions are not attacks, as you will likely try to claim. They are the rightful inquiries of a community seeking accountability. You owe us clear, honest, and complete answers.
Thank you.
Brock Neely address on record. In that packet of information you got earlier is this report from the Williams Institute out of UCLA. Contrary to what your statements are, no trans people are attacking anybody in restrooms. There is no reported cases in this country whatsoever. Now, there are several cases of Republican politicians attacking people in restrooms and ministers attacking people in restrooms and kids. So quit giving out your false information. Follow science. I know you have a hard time with science because it's contrary to your religious beliefs. Fuck up, buddy. Trust me, you're not going to win your next election.
Thank you, Mr. Neely.
UCLA address on file. Yeah, regarding, ah, man, again, number 10. I, I, you know, it didn't change my life. I, I know what I got to do and, and I think the concern is that you gentlemen believe that. A lot of people don't understand that is a concern. And so I really hope that even though that didn't pass tonight, that you guys will continue to work and I'm willing to support you in getting that out there and, and, and letting parents understand what their rights are. Many times I've seen kids getting fights in schools. My own daughter got in a fight in a school and sometimes they're not working for you. They're, they're just trying not to get sued. So I think it's important that people know what their rights are. Miss, you know, Mr. Beltran said that. I know what my rights are. It doesn't mean everybody knows what they are, so let's work together on that. Regarding your, your concern for women in safe spaces, I, I, I agree. Yeah. Is it the city council's job? Probably not. But let's not overlook the other things that are more pressing. There are men abuse, men that are biological men that look like me that are not transitioning, that are abusing women. If we want to talk about the Riley Gaines case, there was a great article in Poblatori Finds Out. The story that was behind the story was her coach was abusing the swimmers. Why aren't we talking about that? Men in authority. Except, and instead we're going to attack a woman who, who we don't agree with their, with, with their choices, who is documented in a locker room, covering up in the corner. We live in Porterville. We're not, we don't welcome transgender people here. Kids are not going to come out here. That is my personal opinion. It's scary to go to Manatcher, Porterville and say I'm a trans kid. They're going to get their butts kicked. That's just the truth. This is not going to happen. So it's not an issue. Is it a fear? Yes. Do you want to not allow it to happen? I get it. Be proactive, but maybe there's other things that come first, like the people that need help in our community. Um, regarding, I want to commend you guys for having an active debate on 17 and, and I watched people, uh, talk to each other and change and convince. That's the, that's the role of city council and transparency is having opinion, listening to each other and coming to a new conclusion. That's great. That's democracy. Great job. I want to applaud you guys for that. And even though I didn't agree with the outcome of 17 because I just don't think we need to be spending money, it is what it is. I just, let's stop spending money. And I know we had $600,000 allocated, but that's Measure I money. That's that, that's that sales tax extra money that we can use for something else. And the last thing I'll say is you asked our city manager, Mr. Tree, about whether that would prevailing wage if it was, um, donated. I would encourage you to check again because I, I assume if it's donated and stalled by non-city and the city has nothing to do with it other than approving at the end, maybe it's not prevailing wage. And we've had structures in this town donated. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
John Coffey, contact information on record. There's a fear in the LGBT community that some of you seem to delight in feeding called perceived loss. On the part of the individual, it's, am I going to lose my family? Am I going to lose my friends? Am I going to lose my job? Am I going to lose my best friend? Am I going to lose? Keep filling in the blanks. I was in my 50s when I met my husband. I would not admit that I was gay in this city until I met him because I was afraid. Shame on you.
Thank you, Mr. Coffey.
Good evening. This is Luis Gonzalez. In regards to the LGBTQ having a fear over this parental rights, safety with women's spaces, I can agree. I know of many friends, uh, at a point even myself, who have been, uh, feeling as if the city didn't really welcome the LGBT. I mean, for crying out loud, I still feel not proud to be a portable citizen when I look back in 2008. I don't know if you guys... I don't know if you guys want to see yourselves as being part of that era, but if that is the case, you're doing more harm to the citizens of Porterville than you can actually realize. There's a bigger picture here. Many people, young people, were kicked out of houses that their parents owned because of their sexual orientation, and you want to disclose that to parents who could be potential homophobes? Get your crap together.
Thank you, Luis.
Rough run tonight, huh? But I'm up here tonight to maybe change the mood a little bit, or, or say some thank yous, or some, some good stuff. First of all, kudos to the city, all the city staff, everybody. I walked Main Street on Saturday for a small business. The light poles, the street, the sidewalk, you know, all the lights, all the lights down Main Street look great, they're lit, there's not a burned-out bulb anywhere. Main Street looks really, really good, so kudos to the staff and everybody that was a part of that. Councilman McCurvy, thank you for your comments to, for the city council on the award ceremony we had. It took a lot of work, and we appreciate your comments. Thank you. I stopped by probably two weeks ago, and I saw the city manager over at Food for Less and looked at the, fill the bus drive. I'm kind of curious how that's going, because when I stopped by, it was, it was looking a little rough. I remember when Hopper in the Morning was doing it back in the day, and it was a big hit, so hopefully, hopefully things are picking up with that. And last but not least, I've been coming to city council meetings for about a year. And kudos, I've never met her, but kudos to your city attorney, Julia, to give you guys all the legal information that you guys need and keep all the biased stuff out of it. Article 10, that's been going on for a while, and she just gives you the, I'm not a lawyer, so, it, just the legal information that she continues to provide you and keep her biased or her personal opinion out of it, I guess that's just what a good attorney does, but I just want to say thank you to her. It's one of those thankless jobs. So with that being said, I just wanted to come up, it's been a rough night, a lot of hard hits, but I just wanted to say some thank yous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyler.
On a lighter, but not a less important matter, I'd like to commend Vice Mayor McCurvy about downtown. I'm a business owner, retired, 35 years, and I know how important it is to have an atmosphere, not only in your city, but around your business, that is to attract people. Downtown improvements, thank you, it definitely needed it. However, I think what needs to be taken consideration is that there's really nothing in this town other than a couple minor festivals. The chilly, one I just went to had a really good turnout. But I find myself as an individual in the city going to other cities because they have more activities going on. So I think if there's any way that that committee or any other new committee can be formulated to find out ways to get people to come to Porterville. For me to have to go to Visalia and even Clovis, Clovis is probably by far one of the best cities around here that promotes festivals, and thousands of people will go to these festivals. I know, I've been a gone, I've been gone for 35 years, I know before I left, the Orange Blossom Festival was huge in, in Lindsay, which I'm not sure what's left of it now. People go to Camp Nelson for their festival up there, people go to Springville for the Apple Festival, but we don't have anything here. I think we used to have the Iris, that was when I was gone, but I think that plantation or farm is gone now. But anything that can be done to improve the downtown and the festivals that are here in the city to bring more people here. And speaking on that, to kind of bounce off of my earlier comment about the flags, it's, it's sad to have new people, if you're going to have new people come in this town, it's sad to have people look up at the pole and see flags that are flying in this city, which means this city represents what's on those flags. And in today's times, those flags have a lot of controversy and a lot of negativity associated with them, and I don't know why we would put ourselves in our spot that you guys have now, that would welcome people coming into this town and then have them look up the light pole and make assumptions of what the city represents. The city's not represented by "Don't Tread on Me," and I've done research, and even the Betsy Ross flag has stuff associated with it. So all I'm saying is that at some point in time, maybe we need to look at replacing some of those controversial flags to make our city look more accepting to newcomers and not judge the city based upon what they see.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move on to other matters. Councilman Beltran?
Yeah, I was waiting for the end of the meeting because I was hoping it wouldn't go so long to say stuff at the beginning. Yeah, the Chamber Awards was a great event, and, you know, even as a council member, you get to meet people you wouldn't normally interact with, but I think when I walked in, I looked around, I knew somebody at every single table, and that just made me so happy to know that our community, as diverse as it is, I knew everybody pretty much in that room. So it was really great to see the businesses, the nonprofits, the, the local leaderships, the Exchange Club winning nonprofit of the year, I mean, just, just a great environment and a great recognition for those, so great job to the chamber. Thank you, Mr. McCurvy, you, early, you recognized, it was in the newspaper, what the New Rescue Mission and their efforts in the community, and I wanted to highlight a little bit of what they do. You know, there's a lot of taxpayer money that goes towards the Armory and towards the Navigation Center, which is our homeless shelter, hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, and the New Rescue Mission is a nonprofit, they take no tax dollars from the state, from federal, from local, and they house actually more people than our Navigation Center does, and so I'm glad, you know, from time to time, they'll have renovations that they need to do there to be compliant, and the city is, is working with them to, to bring those up. But again, there's these little nonprofits out there in these organ, in, in our community that could really use some volunteers, some monetary funds, but last year I had the honor, or earlier this year, I had the honor of inducting my dad into the Wall of Fame, as my mom was inducted about 10 years before. But at 70 years old, he's still out there putting boxes together, lifting stuff up, and, and just donating his time, and just, it was great to see these young ladies today with the Queens Court and to just, the Veterans' Queen Court, just to see, you know, those are early stages of activism in your community, and so when I see like the young, young blood in our community, whether they stay here or not, but then I, you know, and then the, the kind of the other side of it, my father for as long as I can remember, my whole life being active in the community, it just kind of encapsulate my experience up here on the council, to see that in our community, it's just beautiful. And the last comment, I'm looking forward to, for a Christmas parade in the next couple days down here on Main Street, and yeah, the Main Street looks beautiful, I can't wait to see, you know, the, the Christmas banner up there, and it's just, just hopefully in these times, whether it's Thanksgiving or the holidays, just a reminder of how beautiful our community is, the tree lighting ceremony, Denise Marchand did an excellent job, St. Anne's Church was there, Pastor Christie from Port Naz, I mean, just again, all these different entities, different denominations, just all coming together and recognizing Christ, and it was just beautiful to see all those people out there, it was a chilly night, but just again, whether there's tough questions here in the chamber, but just outside these doors, I've just, it's just amazing how wonderful our community is, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Beltran. Councilman Rivas?
I echo a lot of what Mr. Beltran said. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend that ceremony. Kudos to the Chamber of Commerce for giving a really good presentation, and also to Mr. Taha Saleh for making that great speech, like Mr. Vice Mayor said. But, you know, I understand the flag issue, and me coming from the position where I was from, it is a neg, those flags are negative in, in a sense, but you got to take into consideration the heritage of where these flags came from. I, I understand it, I get it, but it's, we cannot control what other groups want to utilize for their own little negativity or their white nationalism or, or Christian nationalism, we, you can't control that. But when this country was founded, you know, they needed flags for a purpose, to rally the troops, to have the, the country that we have today, and that's what those flags represent. You can misogynize it any way you want, and by the way, if I tell you where the swastika came from, would you, I mean, could you tell me where it came from? Because Hitler, excuse me?
India.
Exactly. And what does that mean? It means good fortune. So what was the beginning of the swastika was good fortune of Goodhaven, somebody turned it into a negativity, and that's what, we know what that swastika flag means. So always remember where the originality of certain flags, not where the negativity of certain individuals or groups like to portray them to be. So I, I get it, I understand it, I understand the frustration, but, I mean, you, you have some people that took the time to research these flags, and these flags mean something different, positive, of the country that we have today, not the negativity of what certain groups have portrayed it to be. So I, I just don't like when, when people try to use it as these individuals looked at the history, not of the present history of some groups. So look at it that way. So on another note, yeah, I'm looking forward to the Christmas parade, I'm going to be walking down the Christmas parade, I look forward to it, the, 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 the Main Street looks beautiful, the lights, everything looks like I remember growing up as a kid, but, you know, it just, we need to just collaborate, talk to each other, because, you know, I got elected for a reason, and I want to make some positive change for Porterville. I don't want to put Porterville in any legal bounding issues. So with that, I, I can go on and go on and go on, but I'm not one to speak on my own personal issues, it just, I don't like doing that, but anyway, with that, you know, I've, I've gone to a lot of ceremonies, and, and they're very honorable, and, and I take great pride in when I go to these, you know, these ribbon cuttings and so on and so forth, because I'm representing the city. So I want to represent the city in a, in an honorable, respectable way. So with that, you know, thank you very much for the reports that you guys, the city staff has done. Mr. Tree, you've, you've out, you outdone yourself again, Mr. Moore, you outdone yourself. It was good meeting you, sir, and Mr. Hint, the, the new city, uh, police chief interim, and hopefully you can, you know, continue the great work that the previous predecessor was doing. So with that, Mr. Alvarez, I appreciate you, you hanging on. Mr. Russell, thank you very much for, for your, your engagement with, with, with the department. I just wanted to say thank you very much for all the, you know, the, your opinions, your, your, your concerns, and, you know, they don't take, I, I don't take that, you know, granted. So with that, thank you, and I think I said enough, so anyway, best to you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Rivas. Councilman Green?
Well, I think, I don't have any other comments tonight, so I'll save everybody any further misery tonight, so with that, thank you, folks. Appreciate you coming here.
Vice Mayor McCurvy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, I thought the flow was a lot better tonight, I liked the changes that we made, where we have the comments up front, there was a lot of great sentiment and spirit in here. I love seeing all of the city staff in here that's moving up through the ranks and taking on some new roles and responsibilities, and I like to see that growth in our city. I have just a couple of responses that I would make or observations. I think that there was a good observation tonight that we're starting to make some progress on being a more friendly city to do business. We have a long way to go. I think that if we continue, and some great comments from, from out in the audience tonight, if we continue to be a, a place where people want to do business, then maybe we'll have more business and people will be less inclined to go out of town. It's going to take some time, but I think we have to tackle that going into next year and work on being a more friendly place to do business, so that we can continue to develop our downtown and other areas, so that we can thrive, and people will be, have more options to stay in town. If, that's the only way that's going to change, and it's going to take some time. You know, to go back to the, the great things that happened at Thanksgiving, and, and there's a lot of unsung heroes out there that do a lot of good work around our community. When you, when you look at the faith-based organizations that are helping these guys to get an education and get their life back in order, and, and what they do at the Rescue Mission and other places like the Rescue Mission, they do it for zero, they do it for volunteer. We pay $2 million a year for the Navigation Center, and the guys that get paid zero do a better job. We have to go into 2026 with a new focus on the Navigation Center and a new focus on our Armory, because, you know, that, that's money that we could be spending on the library, that's money that we could be spending in the community. We have to make sure that we're delivering results for everyone, and I think that it's a great example of something that we can do better, and we got to be creative and think it, think about those things in some new ways going into next year, because the, the help that they get at the Rescue Mission, that's lifetime help. People, they're changing lives, and that's not happening at the Navigation Center, not, not nearly, and it's not even in the same universe, and it's a great point, and I think we got to get serious about that, because we spend a lot of money trying to help people, and it, and it's not going as well as it ought to. So I just wanted to make that point as I exit, I thought the flow was great tonight, it's a great conversation, spirited debate, still some hostility out there, but, you know, that's just the way it is. You guys have a great night.
Thank you, Vice Mayor McCurvy. Looking forward to the Christmas parade this Thursday, I will be driving Santa Claus for the fourth year in a row, so excited for that. And then I invite you all to First Friday Coffee for the State of the City, which I'll be giving that address. It sounds like the Stonewall Democrats will be there once again in great support, and just for my colleagues, you know, it's, to say I'm disappointed would, would be the least, and, you know, I've, I've had my hand in lobbying all of you in getting into, to politics, and, and so you guys know where my stance is, but I've also done door knocking all around the city, and I, I've, I've door knocked in, in multiple districts, and, and I'll tell you that people are tired, they're tired of being trampled on, so yeah, you had a, a minor majority here tonight that wants to do protests about the library or about the positions we're taking, but I'll tell you, the vast majority of the people of Porterville, the state of California, are, are getting tired, and there'll be a tipping point. You know, I, I, I used to tell John Lawless, because at one, one time, I was in the minority, I never played a victim, I never tried to, oh, you're picking on me, I, I didn't, I was in the minority, I dealt with it. But I used to tell John Lawless, I'd tell him, even when I'm losing, I'm winning, because I'm fighting up for the right issues, and I'm not afraid to lose. I'm willing to die on that hill, and I'm going to do what's right. Threaten me about elections, bring it on. With that, I'll pass it off to the city manager. Would love to hear something from our, for our new chief, I know it's 10 o'clock at night, but hand it off to you, sir.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure interim chief Raider would like to provide some comments, and even our director of transportation is probably itching to provide some comments as well. We'll probably have a, a meeting tomorrow to discuss that. I'm not sure if you noticed, but we have new cameras in the council chambers. One of the desires for the council would, was that the cameras point and tilt and zoom, and so if you look above you, Mayor, right now, the, the camera's actually pointed at me, so that people on YouTube or watching it in the virtual, they can see now who's talking, and when the, when the council is talking, when an individual council member is talking, it zooms into that council member. So I just want to give a shout out to our IT department who made that improvement, I think that's been asked by the council for a long time.
Yes.
I also want to say thanks to Fernando, who's doing a lot behind the scenes over there. Yeah, great job. He's got, he's got a, a video game of some sorts over there that can control, and he's got all the keys, and he can, he can see the view right from his, I don't know if he showed it to you, but you'll have to check that out.
No, and I, I got to second that, just even with the mic system and, and what we're doing with the cameras now, outstanding Fernando, I know you've had your hand on that and doing the research and helping us get to something that's presentable when people get on YouTube and watch, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, we're continuing to- We're continuing to strive.
I highly suggest going on to YouTube tonight if you want to review. There's been a few improvements on it.
Thank you, sir.
Fantastic. Thanks, Fernando. We will continue to improve. Some new TV screens are going to be installed this month. We're out to bid for, you know, some new renovations within the council chambers. We're excited to see how that project shapes up. I too am excited for the children's Christmas parade Thursday, as well as the state of the city. I appreciate all of the staff's efforts in putting that together. It, it's not, it's, it's a year in review, and so staff have, with all our departments, have been working extremely hard all year round. This is an opportunity, and I invite the, the council and all of our, our staff that can attend to celebrate and, and a tremendous amount of work that was performed over the last year. It's kind of like a celebration for us, and, and get to see some pictures that we have on projects that we haven't seen for almost a year. So that's at seven AM at Galaxy Nine, the, the public is also invited to attend. We are having our annual employee luncheon on December tenth, where council is invited, and help us serve the employees. If you're able to attend, it starts at eleven thirty at the Corporation Yard. I know, Mayor, you, you serve on the TCAG board. Their December board meeting is on December eighth next week. There, they give out some awards for their annual rock and roll art contest and give away bikes to school kids that participated in that art contest, so that should be a good board meeting to attend, and a workshop, so it starts early. With that, some good news coming from TCAG, where recently, they provided an additional two million dollars to the city of Porterville, as well as a couple other cities for bike and ped projects. So we're look, staff is, is preparing some, some projects to present to council at a, at a future city council meeting to decide and kind of pick on and evaluate what, where the city might want to spend that additional two million dollars. So that's exciting. We appreciate the support always from, from TCAG. You know, the, the Heritage Committee has, has been doing a lot of work in preparation for activities throughout the calendar year, and, and, and so the chamber also does a tremendous amount of community activities, and, you know, as far as I'm aware, we have monthly activity, monthly activities for the community to participate in. And so we'll do a better job advertising and getting the word out on all of the activities that the community can participate, you know, from the Veterans Parade in November to the Christmas Parade this month. You know, this next year, there'll, there'll be monthly activities, like we've always had, actually, every year, the Heritage Committee thought that the most cost-effective solution to celebrate this year's celebrations is to just latch on to what the city has done historically for the last number of years and just enhance it. So there's a lot to do for, for the community to participate in, in events. I also want to give a shout out to our Economic Development and Community Development Department to, from the Downtown Committee, there was a desire to have some nighttime activities to support downtown businesses, and so from that, our staff has been engaging with local businesses. And so we encourage, you know, during this holiday season, I know it's easy to shop on your phone, on, online, and you can have it delivered in a couple of days, but our, our local businesses need that support. And so for the month of December, downtown businesses are going to stay open, that, that are participating, an extra two hours from five to seven every Friday. Some social media posts have been going out about that, some extra activities. We've got carolers. The Downtown Committee is, is really doing a great job. I, I want to just offer to the community to, as you're doing some shopping, is, is definitely think local, shop local, support our local businesses. And with that, on December eighteenth, the Tulare River Tribe of California has invited us to an award ceremony, where they'll be presenting two donations to the city, one to support our library, the second is to support our fire department and the Firefighter Memorial. So we're excited. We appreciate the, the tribe's continued donation and support for, for the city services. Now, I will turn the time over to interim chief Raider. Do you have any final comments?
Sure. At this late hour, I would just like to say that I am grateful and humbled to have the opportunity to join the proud men and women of the Porterville Police Department. It's an excellent police department filled with excellent people, and I'm really grateful to be there, and I am very excited about what we are going to accomplish in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Raider. With that, meeting's adjourned.